Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. While we're standing, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we have the acknowledgement, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Here, thank you. The crowd in the room is to acknowledge the outstanding efforts of the Jubilee 350th plus two committee and sponsors. Mayor?
We are honored to have these people who have dutifully pursued the interests of the community and the celebration of a great town, its founding, and the enjoyment of living here today. So I'm going to ask that the two, where are they? Christina, Christine Mansfield and Bob Devaney come forward as Chair Co-Chairs of the 350th. We thank you both for all the service and perhaps you can take us through the introductions of the various Chairpeople of the components of such a huge and will be successful enterprise.
So Mayor and Town Council, we can't thank you enough for letting us be here tonight to show you our smiles because...
That mic's not on.
Let's try this again. So Mayor Dickinson and Town Council, we can't thank you enough for letting us be here tonight to show you our smiles and show you how happy we are and the entire team that have put this whole Jubilee together. Just a short couple of days ago, Mary Ellen Echols kicked off an absolute incredible play in this Town Council chambers. Many of you that are up in front were involved with that, including our Town Council Chairman, who sat very quietly many, many nights, there were three nights. But we've had the kickoff. Our Jubilee is on the way. It's Saturday, that's the parade. There's so much excitement. We've come in front of you so many times and say, "We're building, we're building, we're building." Well, guess what? It's here. It's here. And if you can't consume this and enjoy this incredible thing that many people have helped us to make happen, yeah, it's your fault. Bottom line.
Subtle.
Bottom line, a little subtlety there. But it's going to be an awesome time. So Chris?
So we want to recognize, we have four founding sponsors who have donated $20,000 each to defray the cost to our taxpayers. And we're dutifully really indebted to their generosity. Seven years ago, they joined this effort. So we wanted to publicly recognize JP Vonoyt from Asonicare is here, I think. Allison Katie from Cho is not, was not able to make it. And Chris Yulbrook, who of course is the Grand Marshal for our parade from Yulbrook Stainless Steels and Record Journal has been a tremendous founding partner from day one. A tremendous, again, 100 other sponsors, individuals, corporations, and organizations have since joined in the last seven years. And I believe Hank Baum, who, a Wallingford resident from Mutual Security Credit Union is here. And hello.
Jay Shea.
And where's Jay? Jay Shea? Oh, Jay Shea from Yulbrook. I'm so sorry, Jay. Let's give Jay, I can't round it.
None of that. Christine, when you turn around, the mic doesn't hear you.
I'm so sorry. And I, if, Bob, you can turn around and see if there are any other sponsors, please stand and be my eyes in the back of my head, which I promise my children I do have.
Chris Chortle.
Chris Chortle and Anthem. My goodness, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for generosity. I didn't recognize him, not a tired and revolutionary costume. And Bob, and I wanted to recognize Bob, Bob Beaumont from the Historical Society is here on behalf of that sponsorship, so thank you, Bob. And Tar Napp Vernucci is here, who, The Wallingford Magazine has just hit, and we've been really blessed in having that promotional media coverage and...
I guess we've got to admit that so many people got together and stayed with us for seven years. You guys got to remember, we came in front of you seven years ago.
I'm sorry. Tar Napp from Gaylord, thank you. And Liz Landau and Liz Davis from Wallingford Center, Inc., so... If we can have our steering committee, we have several members of our steering committee and directors are here, if you can all stand, please. Bob Parisi, Joan Parisi, Liz Landau, Jonathan Judd, Rajan, Tar Napp, Bob Beaumont, and Sean Doherty, Marty Mansfield.
Let's not forget Marty Mansfield here, okay? Because he's really worked his tail off.
And can the directors please stand up and be recognized, please? Kathy? And Roz Gallagher, another, Roz Gallagher, a part of our steering committee as well. So again, we've got hundreds of volunteers working tirelessly on the committees and our Chairpeople, so thank you for that opportunity.
That's about it.
I know, we look forward to seeing you at the parade, June 18th, Saturday.
1:30 on Saturday.
Saturday. Sunny skies, 74 degrees, cool wind, about eight miles an hour. No hurricanes are in the South African Basin right now, so you can rest assured that we are really prepared and looking forward to this.
Can we hold you to that forecast?
Do you realize, Vinnie Cervoni, that this lady next to me has been the forecaster of the year? Every day I get forecasts, reports about the Jubilee week.
We are committed to a safe and stable environment for all to enjoy, every single day of this Jubilee environment. So thank you for your support. We do look forward to seeing everybody in the community celebrating our great town. Thank you, Mayor, for your support.
Thank you, everybody in the room who has already been acknowledged, but these two are going to walk out of here, you know, humbly and not let us acknowledge them. So Mr. Devaney, Ms. Mansfield, you have clearly been the driving force of everything that led up to these, these coming two weeks, and we know you've worked tirelessly and given up a lot of pieces of your life in the interim and been big cheerleaders. The success of these two weeks is yours. So thank you for that.
But we don't do this without a great team.
It's all partnership.
It's all about it.
Can we just give a special round of applause? Chief Antura, and again, thinking through all of our police force and our emergency personnel, Chief Sensar, our Fire Marshal, the entire Town Hall, the Mayor's Office, these folks, Rob Altramaitis, every department has been impacted.
Electric Division.
Where is our legal counsel who sat with us seven years ago? Kurt Triber. I can't say enough about how impactful our town employees have been, selfless in terms of dedicating, how much we can anticipate to prepare a safe, a risk-free, and really coming together after a pandemic, our health department. So again, a round of applause for our Town Hall. They're amazing. Thank you.
Last thing, like Chris said, Wallingford's unique. We have an incredible town, incredible services, incredible people, and we thank you.
You're here. Thank you. All right. Back on track, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through double A with V and double A as corrected and amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes. Onto item four, items removed from the consent agenda. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. First question through the chair to the mayor, or the council might know about it, is, are you still going ahead with paving the Brothers Parking Lot?
That is supposed to be paved. We're hopeful before this time, Public Works hasn't been able to do it, but it is definitely one of their top projects.
The only reason I ask is because there was an article in the paper, maybe two weeks ago, about the incentive housing zone and redoing the districting downtown, and that lot came into play. Plus, I don't know whether you've gotten the grant yet for the train station. Do you know if that grant's come through, Mr. Mayor?
Are you talking about the feasibility study and the...
Yes.
I don't think we've heard on that, but we do not plan to wait in order to do the parking lot.
Well, because of those two items, I was just wondering why we would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a parking lot that you might want to change the setup of that parking lot. I mean, I don't know whether the council has any say in that, I guess not, but it just doesn't make any sense to pave something before you know what you're going to really do with it, spend that kind of money. It's been sitting there for years. I guess there's no response. The only response you're going to get. It's just a shame if you spend the money and then decide to do something different with that lot. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair, I think, to the controller, who is not Mr. Boz. This name tag's still there. The, just a clarification on how the pension works on the annual decision and how much money goes into the pension. The date of the, the date that the auditors look at the amount of money is June 30th?
Yes.
All right, so this is for the council then, so as we all know, the market's down a little. I mean, it's just ups and downs. And I know that you don't take one year in a picture, but this year, the market's going to be down and you're going to have, it's going to put more, and the controller can correct me if I'm wrong, it will make it so our contribution will probably go up from the other years, even though they do a smoothing, but because it's down, it probably will, the numbers will go up. It's just something the council will be aware of, that this is going to be another added expense in the budget next year that's going to be a very difficult budget to begin with. And that's...
Your logic is correct.
So I would hope this goes to ARPA, that some of those funds hopefully could go towards some town projects, because you're going to have a very difficult budget next year, and most of those budget, most of those items probably will fall by the wayside because, as the mayor will say, the sky's falling and there's no money for it. But you have money for it right now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public question and answer period and move on to item six, which is to hold a public hearing to consider an act on the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Program. And the council will then adopt a resolution on the Neighborhood Assistance Program. The list of applicants. We do have a recusal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself from this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tada. The list of applicants for the Neighborhood Assistance Programs are Church of the Resurrection for Energy-Efficient Door Replacement, $150,000, Columbus House, Wallingford Emergency Shelter, $120,000, Gaylord Hospital, Energy Efficiency Upgrades, $150,000, Gaylord Hospital, Patient Programs and Services, $150,000, Holy Trinity, Roman Catholic Corporation, Energy-Efficient Windows, $150,000, Wallingford Church of the Nazarene, Gleanings, lovely offered to Walling... I'm going to read that again. Gleanings lovingly offered to Wallingford, $1,000. Wallingford Family YMCA, YMCA Healthy Communities Campaign, $150,000, Wallingford Public Access Association Incorporated, Building Climate Management Insulation, $18,016. So, and the way the program works is that corporations who pay the Connecticut State Corporate Tax can make donations to support these programs through this community Neighborhood Assistance Program to get credit towards their state tax contributions. So the public hearing is open. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Going once, going twice, three times, gone. I now close the public hearing, and can I have a motion on the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to submit Neighborhood Assistance Applications to the Department of Revenue and Services and summary list of programs for 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Program and to exercise any amendments, rescissions, or, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Wallingford.
May I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had this item for many years, you're familiar with this. But just, just to be clear, if I had a tax liability to the state, I could opt to pay the Church of the Resurrection, in my example, $50,000, and that they're supposed to attribute that to energy-efficient door replacement, and then I am satisfying my tax obligation. Is that basically how this works?
I don't believe so. I think they receive a credit for a contribution, more of a charitable contribution category. I don't believe it satisfies an actual dollar figure of indebtedness.
So then what is the tax effect of that payment? My understanding is they get a credit against something, so what are they getting a credit against?
It would be against, I believe, taxes that had, I don't think it's delinquent taxes, I think it's against your next taxes, assuming that you had fully paid your arrearses.
But, you know, we can check into that.
I, I don't know for certain, but I don't think you're eligible as a corporation to do this if you are not up to date, that you have not paid all of, all of the monies owed to the state.
Yeah, I didn't use the word delinquent. So I guess the scenario is that a corporation owes a tax to the state of Connecticut of $200,000, and instead of paying $200,000 to the state of Connecticut, they pay $150,000, and then $50,000 to this church, and that satisfies their obligation. Is that generally how this works?
It's, it's not a dollar for dollar.
Yeah, I don't think it's dollar for dollar, but it's a question for the Department of Revenue and Services, state of Connecticut. We, we are not responsible for that side of it.
Okay, so...
If you could identify yourself for the record and provide some assistance, that would be...
Sure, Hank Baum, 44 Pearson Drive. I'm pretty familiar with this program. What it is, is it's Schedule C Corp's, so you have to be a C Corp in order to qualify. And in your example, $200,000 you owe in taxes, if you give $100,000 to one of these organizations and it qualifies at 100%, you would receive $100,000 tax credit towards your $200,000. If the example is not energy-related or, or something else, it may qualify for only 50% reimbursement, but still you would be received 50% of the taxes, dollar for dollar that you spent.
And that's the utilization of the funds that are received by the recipient.
I'm sorry?
That's, as far as the classification, whether or not you're giving a dollar for dollar or something else, is based upon how the recipient utilizes those funds?
That's correct. During the application process, you have to basically explain what you're doing and whether it qualifies for 50% or 100%.
Sure, so I think, I haven't heard anything that disagrees with what I, because the documents before us says, "Energy-efficient door replacement." So I suppose under that scenario, the $100,000, as long as it's used for an energy-efficient door replacement, it's allowed a certain number of credit. That's what, that's what we're approving, that's what's on the document. It doesn't say, just write a check to the Church of Resurrection, this is what they're looking for money for.
Correct.
Okay. So, thank you for that. That being said, I'm just trying to figure out, the entry that says, "The Wallingford Church of the Nazarene," what is the intention here? You know, the chairman read, "Gleanings lovingly offered to Wallingford." And gleanings, my knowledge of that, is leftovers from a harvest. So am I to understand that the corporation pays money to the church to purchase gleanings and then to give them lovingly, or at least offering them lovingly, to Wallingford? I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. It says, "Gleanings lovingly offered to Wallingford."
We appear to have a representative from the church.
Roger Deering of Sharon Drive, I am part of the Church of the Nazarene, and I am the one who submitted this application. Counselor Fishbein, that's a good question. You could think of this as a donation to our food pantry. Gleanings lovingly offered to Wallingford is simply the donate, the name of our food pantry.
And just to be clear, what is the, the name of the food pantry?
Gleanings lovingly offered to Wallingford.
Okay, okay, that, that makes sense. It's not an action, it's a, it's a body.
Yes.
Right? Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question. How does the town, or what is the process on how we solicit applications for this program?
My understanding is we advertise, we notify the community as to this program, and applications are submitted to the Office of Program Planning, and we have the list and...
So we advertise in the newspaper, we send out mailings?
My understanding, right. It would be on the website, I believe.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
Yes.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni.
Yes, the motion passes, and Counselor Tada's abstention is noted. All right, on to the public hearing on the capital improvement program. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $1,762,362 appropriation and bond authorization for the 2022-2023 capital improvement program. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting or from the Town Clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? It's just on the reading of the motion, it's not on the substance. It's just a procedural motion.
Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
Yes.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni.
Yes. The motion passes. Title is an ordinance appropriating $1,762,362 for the planning, acquisition, and construction of various municipal capital improvements, 2022 to 2023, and authorizing the issue of $1,762,362 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. This is the public hearing portion. Are there questions, comments from the public? Mr. Gross.
Good afternoon. I know you go through this every year, and you don't bond it, you just pay cash.
If you could just identify yourself through the...
Oh, Bob, please. I thought you identified me. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road?
Not that way, I didn't.
Okay. Every year you do the same thing, you have this, you have the attorney sitting over there, and then you turn around and just pay cash for it. Maybe this year, though, might be the year to bond it. Rates are skyrocketing. I know it's a small amount of money, but you have things on the horizon to do. Police station, maybe a community pool, those type of things. The controller's here. Interest rates are at a certain point right now, you can bond, because you need a project to bond, and you could take that additional cash and pay down maybe the cost of the police station or the cost when you hopefully do a community pool. It's just an idea, maybe even Mr. Mayor has an opinion on that?
I think our general approach has been to maintain financial flexibility to allow us to properly plan whatever indebtedness we are currently obligated to pay, as well as future. So that, that's the purpose of this, to maintain that flexibility and allow the Finance Department to wisely use the funds available.
But wouldn't this year be the wise year to spend the money, not to spend the money, but to bond that money? Because you always pay cash for it.
That will be a decision ultimately the Finance Department will have to make, because no one has a crystal ball, no one can be certain what will be happening from week to week, and...
No, but I can guarantee you, as I stand here right now, a year from now, rates will be substantially higher than they are now, and I don't think there's anybody in this room who could really deny that fact. So, I mean, they're going up this week, a matter of fact, and there'll be a few more of them within the next six months, and they're not going to go down as quick. So I would hope that to see, and it's a small amount of money, but you should bond as much as you can now to take advantage of the relatively low rates. I mean, mortgage rates are getting close to six now, if they haven't hit it already, and they were, what, a few months ago? So hopefully you will do that. Thank you. It's just better for the town.
Any other comments from the public? All right, there being none, I close the public hearing. And is there a motion and a second on the proposed ordinance appropriating $1,762,362 for the 2022-2023 capital improvement program and bond authorization to be adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I think that was Counselor Zandry. All right, discussion from the council. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as part of this initiative, this item, is addressed the townwide paving program. And I believe on May 9th, the planning and zoning... the Planning and Zoning Commission rejected our proposed utilization of capital projects. And I know our town clerk referred us their minutes, which I think in there reflects their rejection. So has that issue been resolved?
I'm not aware of any rejection of the planned program.
I'm looking at minutes from May 9th, 2022. I believe a portion was highlighted for us. They were... Well, I guess the appropriate question is, did planning and zoning approve these capital improvements?
I was informed, yes, they have.
Do we know when that happened?
I'm not going to try to put a date on it right now.
I will continue to look, but I know...
I believe it happened before the night the budget was adopted, so around that timeframe.
Yeah. We got it notice of it like the day after we adopted the budget.
I don't know the exact date, but it was around the adoption of the budget date. So it should be before the 24th.
So, Mr. Senator, you have the understanding, I mean, they never came before us. They had raised questions at their meeting and...
The only thing I'm aware of is I received notice that they approved the six-year capital plan. And that's part of that plan.
I, you know... I'm hoping I'm not the only one who remembers this. But I'll defer while I continue to look. But I know we got it the day after the, we adopted the budget. So I don't know how we could have a legal budget, but I'll defer at this point. I'll continue to look for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Senna, I just have sort of a general question. When we talked about the budget, there was some discussion over when we bond, we need to be very specific in what we're bonding for. So my concerns, I guess, are items 1, 2, and 3 of this, which is townwide paving, sidewalk installation replacement, and curbing. Because nowhere in the document does it specify what it is that we're paving or what we intend to pave. And in the budget, I know there's a one, there's a one-line entry in the cap and non that specifies an amount that we intend to spend on townwide paving. Are we comfortable with the language without specifying what the projects are and bonding for them en masse?
Yes. The language is the same language that's been used for years.
Okay. Well, and the reason I'm asking is, during the budget process, the question came up of what if the town were to surplus cash or whatever reason, could you bond it? And the answer was that we couldn't because we need to be specific about what we're bonding it for. So my question is, I guess, is just about the level of specificity of saying townwide paving.
I believe that the list of those roads are available from Public Works.
All right. I'll follow up there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein, are you still scrolling?
I am. I'm still hoping I'm not the only one who remembers this, but I am still scrolling. I will be vote, I mean, if you're going to call a vote, I'm going to vote no out of deference to our Planning and Zoning Department. Certainly, the questions that they had raised during that meeting have not been answered by this body. So, but I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the deferral.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty much every year, we have a discussion of one sort or another about this. It's my understanding that this procedure goes back many, many years, probably put in effect by Mr., I think it was Mr. Myers, probably many years ago. And we ask the same thing every year, that this is, in many ways, this is a formality that we need to go through in order to authorize the expenditures on the capital improvement plan, which we pay for with the Electric Division pilot money. More or less, correct? Am I in the right place? Yes. So, given that we have in our budget, you know, a six-year plan, what's expected to be done every year, and that changes could be made through a recommendation from the administration and approval by the council on any specific appropriations, I would assume that if the list of roads, I'm still trying to figure out what you're talking about, but if the list of roads, some of the paving was for some reason, those projects were denied by planning and zoning, we could find other roads to pave. And I think this motion, this ordinance, refers to the paving program as outlined in the capital improvement plan, which can be amended whenever. So this is an overall approval. We know what it's going to be for. And if changes had to be made, they could be made. Thank you.
Thank you. I see, no. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't crazy. So on May 9th of 2022, which was the day before we approved the budget, the minutes that we got reflect, under reports of officers and staff, the item is "Review of Six-Year Capital and Nonrecurring Budget." Chairman Seichter asked Mr. Pajini to ask the town engineer at Public Works about the plan for sidewalk repairs. He noted that several sidewalks in the town center have been patched or replaced with asphalt. Is that temporary? Regarding streets to be repaired, he suggested asking if South Cherry Street between Hall Avenue and Quinnipiac Street can be added. He also asked how we can get the state to repair Quinnipiac Street from Cherry Street to Route 5. Mr. Pajini promised to pass on these concerns. Commissioner Benoit motioned to remand to the town council approval of the six-year capital and nonrecurring budget. Commissioner Fitzsimmons, second. The vote was unanimous. So how, so this was, I mean, based upon that, isn't that what we're talking about tonight? I mean, so when was it approved by the planning and zoning?
By the language, they voted to approve it.
No. It says, "Motion to remand." Remand means send back. To the town council, approval of...
Yeah, right. They're sending back approval. You shouldn't have used the word remand maybe, but they're sending back approval. It wasn't just to remand it.
It certainly wasn't a motion to approve.
Well, it was a motion to approve. That's what it states. And just technically, if we want to get into dancing with the technicalities, 8-23 does not cover repaving of an existing road or repair of existing sidewalks. It deals with new construction. If you're widening a road significantly, that might fall under it. But generally, 823 does not cover things that you're putting into a proper condition. You're repairing, you're reconstructing an existing facility. So 823 would not cover, really, the roads that get repaved.
So procedurally, though, on the item that's before us, a remand is where determination is made by somebody. It is sent to someone else for some sort of approval. That's the procedure. When it's rejected, it's sent back. That's a remand. That's, you know, we're familiar with that with the courts. A case goes to the Supreme Court and the court says, "No, you did something wrong. We're sending it back to you to, we're remanding it to you. We're not approving it. We're not affirming. We're remanding." I mean, that's the language that they used in their minutes. So I...
No, they did not use that language. They said they remand an approval. They approved. It's an approval. It's not remand for further action. It's not remand subject to receiving more information. It is an approval that was communicated.
I have never made a motion to remand in this room in the over the decade that I've been here. They made a motion to remand to the town council. It's not a motion, it was not a motion to approve. I'm just going by what, you know...
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I don't think, first of all, I don't think that the P&amp;Z review is an absolute precursor to this funding, precursor to this funding ordinance. That having been said, we can write to P&amp;Z for clarification of that vote.
Perhaps that would be helpful. I just, if their minutes are wrong, it would be helpful. You know, when I read that, I was a little concerned. Just re, you know, but whatever. So I think... We're just looking to follow the proper procedure here. And I think that somewhere, it might be in the charter, it is required that P&amp;Z approves that plan. I know that's been the representation in the past. So I'm a little distressed in that, I mean, I think everything else on their agenda says, "Motion to approve." Yeah, a motion to adopt. So if...
Mr. Chairman, nowhere in the charter does it require a planning and zoning approval. That is, by state law, it's 8-23.
24.
8-24. That provision indicates there are certain areas that they must approve. It does not include repair, repaving of existing facilities.
I would at least be, if it's not, if it's not required, we obviously have a body of our town that is expressing concern about a plan. And it's the Planning and Zoning Division. So I would at least like to know, did they get answers to their questions? Or are they frustrated? Because they are planning and zoning. So, you know, that would be of assistance to me.
Well, it seemed to me that what they were questioning dealt with existing facilities, which they would have no authority to approve or disapprove.
They asked about the plan to pave certain areas. They also asked about...
Okay.
...the plan for sidewalks.
That's right. And those are all existing sidewalks, existing roads, that is outside of what 8-24 requires. So even if they were looking for more information, the subject matter at hand, the paving of roads and the reconstruction of sidewalks, still stands as properly before us and is clearly within the will of the town of Wallingford to approve at this time. If we do not approve it, it just means that we'll waste more time. We won't be able to start July 1st with whatever projects we have, and it delays all of the process for the expenditure of the capital program. But again, 824 does not deal with the paving of existing roads or the reconstruction of existing sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, can we, is it possible to make this vote contingent upon some sort of assurances from planning and zoning? They've gotten answers to the question. I mean, they're asking about patching. What's the plan? Is this temporary? That kind of stuff? I'll tell you, there's sidewalks over in Yalesville that haven't been done in over a decade. So they're expressing concerns. I'm expressing concern.
I am happy to see clarification from them, but I don't think that this bond authorization needs to be contingent upon that. But I am happy to see clarification.
Understood. Thank you.
Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question that came up when Counselor Testa was speaking. So if this is the cap and non list, which it appears to be, then this is funded through the Electric Division pilot money? So if that's all correct, and I'm not sure why we're bonding it because we have the cash from the Electric Division?
We're authorizing to give me the, to give us the ability to bond if we need it. It just gives us flexibility.
Okay. But you're, but the plan is to use the Electric Division pilot money and not to bond?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There appearing no other questions, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes. It passes. All right. On to item 8, which is discussion and possible action regarding the fire union pension tentative agreement.
Good evening, councilors. Jim Huck, Town HR Director.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to seek your approval on a one-year extension with no changes to the pension contract for Local 1326, which is the union representing firefighters and emergency medical technicians in the town of Wallingford. The agreement's a one-year extension with an expiration date of June 30th, 2023, with no changes.
And for those who haven't reviewed the packet or had access to it, can you just remind us what we're extending?
You're just extending the expiration date of the contract from July, from June 30th, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
Okay. I was kind of hoping for a summary of the pension funding agreement, just the percentages.
Just the summary of the contract itself?
Yeah. And not, not all the terms, Not all the terms, but just the numbers, really.
So, I'm sorry, the numbers.
The percentages, how we, how we, what the agreement provides in terms of funding.
Oh. I'm not sure. I mean, the current funding is, has already been appropriated in the budget for next fiscal year. It's twenty-four point four percent of payroll that the town is contributing towards the pension fund.
Okay.
For all participants.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I was contacted by a town employee, and I think this applies to this pension as well. If somebody changes their classification, their job, and they're making less at the new job, does that suspend their tenure term to claim the pension?
If, if they're promoted into another.
No, if they decide to, to go to a different division, or let's say we have a firefighter who's, you know, on the cusp of being pension eligible and decides to go to the electric division, and based upon the classification is making less, does the tenure, that working time, is that suspended, or do they continue to get that time towards their pension? My understanding through this employee is it's suspended.
It all depends what the pension contract is that they're going into. So for instance, for an individual to retire as a, from the fire pension contract as a firefighter, they would need to work twenty-three years within the fire department. They couldn't bridge time from another department into the fire pension contract. Likewise, if they were to leave the fire pension contract and go to the electric division contract for whatever reason it was, they may leave a defined benefit plan, the traditional plan, and have to participate in the cash balance plan.
So what I was told is that it would be suspended until their pay reached the same level as they were making under their prior job.
That does not sound true at all. You should have, if, you know, someone contacts you with those type of questions, you should refer them to me.
Yeah, that's why, you know, I looked at the pension that was before us, and, you know, I looked at the language, and I was like, you know, so I figured you're here, we're talking about this pension, but, but I thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, can we get a motion to approve? Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the fire union pension agreements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Sivoni?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutt. All right, on to item nine, which is discussion and possible action on, and a committee to investigate plan and propose the development of a skate and bike park in Wallingford. Counselor Testa, as you and your laptop make your way to the Elmo for your presentation.
I'd call a recess if I were you.
No, Mr. Moore is here to save all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rather than just make a few comments, and I, I promise you, I'm, I'm going to be relatively brief on both of my agenda items. They're just informational more or less at this point. But I thought I would, it, it's always easier to have something to present to you, to look at when we're talking, and I, I do want to give a little background. I was, have been approached, I'm not alone, other councillors as well have been approached for quite some time from Mr. Jesse Reynolds, among a few others, who's been asking about the possibility of the town putting in a skate park. And in looking into that, I also had conversations with another person in town, actually, you probably know Mr. Corso, this, who is the principal at Lyman Hall, who's son, through his son, is involved a lot in the BMX bike racing. And during, we've had conversations about the possibility of doing a skate park, and, and then it just evolved into a combination, a discussion of even potentially doing both. And Mr. Corso and Mr. Reynolds are neighbors and have been talking about this a lot. And I know that if we ever get to a point of moving forward, both have expressed an interest in assisting and being a part of a committee that might work on this. As, as such, I asked, I have Mr. Reynolds, I had Mr. Reynolds' son Finn in one of my classes, and we've talked about this a little bit, and he had a lot of interest in this, and he's a real sharp kid. So I said, asked him, hey, could you put me together a nice little presentation about just some of the facts briefly, some of the facts? So this is not my work we're looking at here, although I, I am, I put my name on it because I wrote a couple of lines on one slide. But this is basically his, you know, not plagiarizing, but I did do a little. But anyway, I, I've mentioned before, it's my intention to propose that the town build a skate park, and I prefer to see a skate, combination skate BMX bicycle track, park in town. I'd love to see us do it with ARPA funds. That remains to be seen. Whether we do it right away, whether we work on it down the road, remains to be seen as well, because it's up to all of you to get this going. But here's the, the brief presentation on what, what this is all about. Why do we need a skate park? Here's the agenda. This kid's good. What kind of skate parks you'll find, I don't have to read this. I hate when people do that during powerpoint presentations. You can read that. That's what we're going to go over briefly. Why a skate park? Well, clearly it engages the community. There's no question that we've seen a, a certain percentage or a population of, of young people in town who seem to need more to do, that it's productive, and a lot of them like to skate, and we've been talking about this for years. So I think it'd be a real helpful thing for us to provide for them. Also, coming out of the pandemic, anything we can do to offer young people in this town an opportunity to engage in things that they like to do is, is a positive. We'll see that there are some skate parks nearby. There's one in Middlefield. There's a cool picture. That's about a thousand square feet. There's one in Cheshire. Says it's about the size of two basketball courts. And this, couldn't have been scripted better. This was in the paper yesterday, that Meriden is close to putting a skate park in themselves. And I thought that would be interesting to point out. And I just wanted to quote, or share one quote from Sonia Jelks, who's a majority leader and the Park and Rec Committee Chairperson. Oh, you can read the quote, okay? But one thing I thought was wonderful is that she points out that while there are a lot of leagues and camps available, they do cost money. Skateboarding is a low-cost activity, and it encourages social connection. A lot, a lot of young people just aren't geared up or financially able to take part in leagues and camps and so on. And we know they're out there, so why can't we give them, give them a place to go? And I think that'd be a win-win for everybody. I'm going to breeze right through this. We talked about different kinds of designs. If we get to this, we'll probably find that a poured concrete park is the best option. I'm going to go right through this, because we're not at this point, but Finn did a great job of, of making the case for poured concrete as a means of building this. He did, did point out that it averages fifty dollars a square foot. If you want to do a park in Wallingford, you're probably looking at somewhere between two and five thousand square feet. No matter what people talk about, it always seems that concrete is the preferred choice. Better for the skaters, less expensive, more durable, and, you know, a better option overall. The other thing I'd like us to consider is that combining a skate park with other, another project like a BMX track can be very cost-effective. BMX tracks are more costly to build, but they bring about a lot more opportunities to potentially be revenue sources for the town. Mr. Corso has mentioned to me that he travels all around the state with his son's team, and they go to Wilton and other communities that have these, and these are big-time events. They can be local, they could be statewide, national. Naturally, the expense for a, a park that could host those types of events goes up. But even if you stay regional or statewide, people come to town to take part in this, and they pay fees, and there's all sorts of ways revenue could be generated for the local community, as well as going towards the upkeep of the park itself. One thing I, I did, I did forget to mention, I would not want to propose going forward without involving, of course, our Park and Rec Department and the Park and Rec Commission, which is why I'm not looking for any decisions right now. It's up, I would want them to be a part of this discussion, and if we form a committee, naturally I'd want the Park and Rec Commission and the Park and Rec Department to be instrumental in, in, in being a part of that. And I'd love to hear from them and, and Mr. Michaels and his people and the commission on how they feel about this. But this was just an introduction. And that's really it for that. I did ask for some maps, and I shared them with you. It was just three examples. We don't need to look at those right now, but I thought, where could we put one of these? Garden Road came to mind right away, because it's a property we own, and I think it'd be really ideally suited, or potentially ideally suited, both for its size and its location. It goes right up against the dog park. We can combine these two things, and, you know, it could be a, a place, you know, just with more options available to the community. I've thought about community pool. As we look into rebuilding that, which we're going to do, as you all know, yeah, we, we could potentially include something like this on that site. I believe there is some room, but I'll be honest with you, I think that may be a little too much, and I think there may be logistical problems where providing access to a skate and a bike park on a site that is more seasonal, it just could cause some logistical problems. But I just brought it up as an idea. I also thought really strongly about Doolittle Park. I think we need to take a look at that park anyway, on how we're utilizing it. And of course, I'd want to involve Park and Rec in this, but there are several locations there that would lend themselves to a reasonably sized skate park. If you're familiar with it, the far left side, if you go down that road where the basketball court is, there's a little portion off to the left, which is open space. And also, we might want to consider revamping things down there a little bit, and it may not be a bad idea to talk about moving the playground to an area where it's visible from the road, for starters, and potentially we could put a bike skate park and bike track in the area along the right side, where the, where the playground is now and moving back. And I don't think that that would interfere with any other real activities going on there. So I would leave it at this. I, I feel very strongly about this. I would like, I will be making a, a formal motion in the near future to, to get approval to form a committee to look into this. But as I said, I, I, out of respect for the Park and Rec Department and Commission, I would want them to have their say first. But I'd like us to go forward. I think we have places in town we could do this. I think it's long overdue. So if anybody wants to look a little further, I've shared this with everyone. There are a lot of links of other sources you could look at. But that was my presentation. Again, I don't plan on making a motion this evening. So thanks for your time on this, and I'll answer any questions, or we'll move on.
You have a question for Counselor Testa? Counselor Fishbein has a question for you, Counselor Testa.
No.
Is that a, um.
Yeah, right.
So, no, I appreciate this, because I'm, I mean, I'm on board.
Yeah.
The two to five thousand feet, and you, you should have brought Finn with you tonight, but where does that cover, is there some sort of calculation, like per capita or something like that?
I don't think we, he got that deep into it. I, I could ask him what research he did to determine, maybe, even very well may be, based on a town of our size, that, but that's a pretty wide range. That seems to be, I think he looked at the ones that are in other towns, and that seemed to be a reasonable, a reasonable size.
Okay, because, you know, two and then more than double two is.
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
Depends on how fancy you want to get, how creative, how much you want to do. The other thing we're thinking about, he was speaking strictly skate park. I want us to look into a combination. So, and I've seen some, some locations that have both. And I mean, if you look, keep it simple, think of a racetrack that has an infield. You know, we've all, some, we've all seen that, so we, you have a, it wouldn't be a round track, an oval, but think of a track that could be built and the, and the infield could be the skate park, if you were limited by size. Or it could be something that's just all connected together in different ways. So we didn't, we didn't really put forth any suggestions on how big it would have to, he did, you could look at it, you'll see, he did give you an ideas of sizes of, of bike tracks that would be necessary, depending on what kind of event you might want to attract. That's down the road. That, that, that's part of a study to do this.
I think conceptually, the two uses, usages are possible to be harmonious.
Oh, without a doubt, without question.
Skate park is more round and the other one is more linear.
Right, right.
So, yeah, that makes sense.
And you, you know, it's not, you, you'll find many of the same type of people are doing both. And I just, I, I like the idea of considering a BMX track because you can attract events, just like we attract, you know, the soccer tournament every year, things of that nature. People come in and say, oh, now you're going to, you know, they're going to have to pay fees to be a part of this. We can raise, you know, raise some revenue that could be applied towards, you know, taking care of the park. There's all sorts of, you know, the, the opportunities are endless. So we get together, and we, we get a group together to talk about what the possibilities are, what looks feasible, what's reasonable, what's accept, you know, and what, what we all decide we would want to do.
And when we're looking at skate park, we're not necessarily talking skateboard. We're also talking roller blade, that kind of stuff. You could use a skate park for that as well. So I, I think, you know, it's something that, you know, would expand it even more.
No, ice skates.
You're contemplating, not ice skates.
Not ice skates.
No, that's Thursday nights for me.
You could.
You contemplate in your presentation that it'd be an enterprise fund, correct? That the, I think there was an entry that says.
If.
Revenue would be used for the project.
If, if in fact there was revenue generated from, from an operation, you would, yes, you would need to establish that, I assume. I haven't gotten that deep into that.
Yeah, we would have to establish that by ordinance. And then how large a bike track, like, do you know how many linear feet? I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of any of these combination facilities in Connecticut, so.
I know there's one in Wilton, and there's a couple of others in other areas. I'll ask Mr. Corso.
Okay.
I could get you information on that if we went to this. They, they, they're, they're all over the place.
Okay, and then why a committee? Why not just say, you know, we're the council, there's Park and Rec, this is what we desire, bring us back something?
We could do that.
I think it may be more efficient.
Potentially.
Okay.
We could do that.
So I, I will express that I'm sort of adverse to the committee approach. So I'd rather see something get done. So, but I thank you for your presentation.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. My experience is committees do great. They only just, they don't get anywhere, because we stop them.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vin, I really appreciate the, the little bit of backup. You started us off with the maps and, and the other elements, and this presentation's great. I mean, we've, believe it or not, we've been talking about this on and off for twenty-something years. It's been.
Right, yeah.
I, and I kind of want to stress that, because it's not like a few years, this came up before and it kind of went away. It goes away because of frustration, but we've been talking about this a long time. And I guess my quick ask right now, it, you named a number of sites. If, if you could get a genie wish and pick a site, which one would, do you believe that would fit the best, based on the conversations you've had with the people that are more directly involved with this? So their opinion would be which site? Or do they, do they not have an opinion?
I, I haven't received a lot of feedback on that specific question, but I would still answer and say Doolittle, simply because of the location, in an area where it's easy for young people from all around town to get to. But then again, Garden Road possibly could be as well. But I think, I mean, if, if everything, we, we, when we, when we redevelop, we put the plan together for community pool, one thing that really attracted us was the fact that it, it, it provided multiple activities, so a family could go there and, and with their, their children and do different things. So if we were, if we were going to add this to an existing park that already has a lot, it's just more of a family fun center, if you look at it that way, right? Let's go down there. You know, my brother has a baseball game, my sister has a softball game. Oh, I'm going to go roller skate. I'm going to go skateboard, you know, that type of thing. Or the, the mother that has four kids and they're varying ages, now I can go bring, I can go to the playground, and my two oldest can go, go on the skate park. So it just seems to make sense if we could get it in a location where there are, there's more than one activity. You know, I, I think that would just be a, a win, you know, overall. If the location's right, and, you know, it can all be managed.
No, it makes total sense.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that, to me, that would be an ideal place.
Yeah, no, it, it makes sense based, based on the way that you outlined it. And I would, I would probably have to concur with Counselor Fishbein that it's probably better to go back to Park and Rec, let them come back with something. But I would, you know, maybe in short of having a committee of any of us involved, let it be a committee of the people that are, that are going to want this thing built. that are, that are gonna want this thing built. In other words, the, the people that are gonna want to skate, the people that are gonna want to ride, because, I mean, I remember riding my bike down in, in the areas along the Quinnipiac, 'cause there used to be blazed trails over in there where Garden Road is now, before they built the houses.
Your...
The houses that were there that we took down. But I mean, the, that whole area, we used to ride our bikes on those trails anyway, and that was the only reason I was thinking maybe Garden Road would work, 'cause not only would you have the actual formatted path that they would ride on, but they decided to jump off and go off-roading, they could go over there. But, you know, then you make, you make a sensible argument for the other activity, combined activities. So, really, I, I support the idea of it, but I, I really would like to get them engaged. Ultimately, they'll be the ones using it, you know, throughout whatever period of time they do, and then the generation that comes up behind them. And, and let them kind of choose their destiny, instead of, you know, Park and Rec's gonna make a decision based on different elements of what they've got permission to do, and we'll try to shoehorn something in, and I kind of don't want to see that with, with the asterisk on it, I'd rather see that than nothing. But I mean, I, I really would like to get their input, because they're the ones that are gonna leverage it and use it.
I, I agree totally. Yeah, I, I hope I didn't leave the impression that I would want the committee to be any of us. No, that was not my, that was not my, I'm, I'm thinking of the people that are already talking to me. And as I said early, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Corso, they said, you put a committee together to do this, I'm on board tomorrow, and I'll get you any, anything you need, any information you need. So, there are people that want to do this, um, so, and clearly, we need to get Park and Rec, I mean, this is their thing, so I'm not trying to, um, take something away from them, I just want to get your acceptance and your approval that this is something we could, we should do, and then we call Park and Rec and say, hey, we'd like to do this, can you take this on, and we'll go from there.
Yep, totally with it, it's something we should have done 20 years ago, so...
Well, it's funny, I, I've talked to some kids who say, oh, I talked to my father, he was, he was talking to the town 20 years ago, when he was skating.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's not a surprise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. A good idea with community support, you should hire Finn to do all of your presentations.
Yes.
Um, but we, I, I think this is a Park and Rec thing too, and we have the director and at least one of the commissioners here. Do you...
Oh, they came.
Yeah, do you want to, can you come up or comment, or, thank you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys, I didn't realize you showed up, I apologize.
I would miss this for more.
This is all you. How you doing? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, to kind of echo off of Counselor Zandry's comments, that, that this was actually 14 years ago, not 20 years ago. So, I pulled out the robust file on skate parks today that was covered in dust. Um, in 2008, this was a whole big presentation, and actually, Garden Road was one of the sites. It was the open field at Pragman that used to be the tennis courts, and it was Garden Road. The, the Rec Commission voted to not use Pragman, because it ended up becoming an open space field for the growing, uh, flag football league, the move of the Wallingford Vikings tackle football to that location, and then soccer's usage of that field. Garden Road, for whatever reason, I think the interest just died. Um, skateboard's very, skateboarding is very cyclical. If you look at surrounding towns, I know Counselor Testa had mentioned, Cheshire has one, Middlefield has one, North Haven did have one, they removed it because of lack of use. Um, you know, talking about putting a skate park inside of a dirt track for a BMX track, I, I think it's a little bit of a stretch. I didn't think we were a big BMX community. Um, in my almost three years as director, I can count on one finger how many requests we had for a skate park. So, um, me, I, you know, the file's there, we can go through it, there, there, Garden Road was an option, I don't know why it didn't go through, but the last I remember was just the interest had died off.
Um, Garden Road was purchased with state funds, and I believe there are restrictions, but I can check that for you if you're interested.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Michaels? All right. Uh, Counselor Allenson?
I just have, um, one, um, question. I think it's a good idea if there's a lot of public interest and, uh, if Parks and Rec is on board. Um, of course, I don't want to be involved, I know nothing about skating, I used to roller blade, 'cause I'm from California, and we did that a lot, but other than that, um, I did not jump, uh, and I was not very good at stopping. So, um, uh, the only thing that kind of comes to mind for me, um, is maybe we find out from the neighboring communities who have, um, these parks, uh, how there, if there was a, an encumbrance of liability, because, uh, you know, it's a lot, I know that, you know, parks are there, but, um, having a concrete park and people testing out moves on them, um, does definitely open up our ability, or people's ability to injure themselves. So, that's all I want to know, is like, and, and obviously not now, but, um, would there be some sort of, uh, encumbrance on the town to have more robust liability insurance in these places? And that's really just my only question, I don't know if you can answer it.
I cannot, but there was one concern back in 2008, was, was oversupervised usage or unsupervised usage of, of the skate park. Was there gonna be a skate monitor that was gonna be on staff, and was it gonna be, only be open during certain times of usage because of staffing? Or was it gonna be unsupervised, and at that point, who's gonna be enforcing the rules of helmets, elbow pads, knee pads, all that stuff? So, um, I would say I'm sure there is some incurred additional risk, but that's, that's a question for Kurt.
Yeah, I think it's just a question for the future, just a consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and thank you, Counselor Testa, for bringing this forward tonight. I, um, I know that, uh, the Reynolds family and Mr. Corso have put a lot of thought and effort into this, and I appreciate you, uh, bringing it forward, because I know that there is a lot of interest in our community for a skate park, a skate park and a bike park. Um, I guess my question is, what do you see the timeline being? Uh, how do we proceed from here? Um, you know, what are the next steps? Because I, I'm on board with, uh, moving this forward, um, and I just wanted to get your sense as to what the next steps are in moving this project forward.
My next step was going to be to call Mr. Michaels. So...
I'm right here.
He's right here. So, that's my next step, and I think any question from here on in, uh, we could be putting to him, as far as what he thinks, the, uh, how we could proceed with this, and how it, or if we need to do things on our own differently.
No, I think the next step would be for whomever wants to be the presenter to ask to get on the next Rec Commission agenda, which is in August, and they can do the presentation to myself, the Rec Commission, um, as to why and, and the need, and, and then we take it from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So, all I see from the council, any questions or comments from the public? Saw your hand first, Mr. Amore.
Scott Amore, Jenner Road. Um, so, a little history on this. 1992, I sat down with Tom Dooley, and we sketched out a ramp to be assembled and disassembled for the Simpson School, then Rec Department gym. Uh, it was found at that time that we didn't have the liability insurance to cover that, uh, and there was somebody who was gonna look into it, and then nothing ever really came of it after that initial meeting. Um, then somebody from the community stepped up, um, Bruna de Silva, and she rented a 5,000 square foot space on Capitol Drive and opened up a wooden skate park. Uh, I worked there for four years, uh, and it was me, made sure everybody had their helmet on, and, you know, everybody had their membership up to date and that kind of stuff. The skate park then doubled in size and expanded to have a street course. Um, I've been skating since 1983. Uh, I still do a little bit, but my knees and ankles don't let me do as much as I'd like, uh, and, so, when this came up again, I was living in North Branford, so I didn't really had, take part in the 2008, 2009, like, thing that we were doing, uh, in town here. I was still working here, but I wasn't necessarily living in town. Um, since then, skate parks have popped up all over the place, I mean, we already see, seen a few that are just in surrounding towns around here. And, uh, one thing I'd like to say on, on behalf of the people who are gonna use this, is, uh, it's a way to build community amongst young people that they might not have outside of social media and that kind of stuff. Um, it's something we really need. Um, everybody's talking about, you know, kids have nothing to do, we're sending police, we're thinking about putting cameras up, all these different things we're trying to do. This is a way to get, get to the, those symptoms, get them early, you know, make sure everybody has something to do. And people come from other towns. I, I have friends from all over the country that I'm still friends with that I met through skateboarding. Uh, I would travel, doing videos for skateboard magazines, uh, different companies, that's why I work here, is, I was doing video, skateboard videos, and I walked in one day and said, hey, do you guys have any jobs? And I got a job. That was 30 years ago. So, to give you an idea of how long I've been thinking about this in this town, um, I thought Garden Road was a no-brainer, hopefully that comes up as a, a use that's allowed in that area. Um, I feel it's isolated enough, so people aren't gonna complain about noise and stuff like that. Um, generally, you're gonna have a lot of noise and, and, you know, generally, music playing in the background, if somebody brings, uh, some way to play music. Things like that can be talked about in the detail part of it. Uh, as far as the liability goes, I'm sure the Rec Department's current liability with the town, uh, will cover more than anything, uh, having to do with a cement skate park. Um, another thing is that, in the past, they were all made of wood, a lot of these ramps were made of wood, and they took a lot of upkeep, there was a lot of splinters, and most of the liability came from disrepair. So, I suggest the, the concrete park, very little repair, you patch it here and there if it gets a crack or something in the off-season. For the most part, they'll last forever. Um, as Kenny said, they're, they are cyclical, so you might see a lull, and, uh, I think, you know, I, I don't think we'll hastily remove it, 'cause we won't hastily put it in either, um, so we'll probably talk about this. I think a committee is the way to go, because you just want people who are gonna be the users of this to be involved in, you know, what it should be and how it should look. Um, so, you know, I'll volunteer for a committee if there is one eventually, if that's a thing that's gonna happen. I think that, um, one thing you gotta realize is that a lot of kids don't appreciate team sports, they don't appreciate school-sponsored sports. They want to, like, go do their thing, maybe they're more creative, they're more artistic. This is a way for them to learn how to express themselves, uh, learn tenacity. I mean, you know, throw yourself off a set of stairs 20 times before you get to land a trick, is, teaches you, you know, teaches you something about how to, how to not give up, how to, like, continue on, and, excuse me, and how to be creative. Um, so, if you think about it from that sense, um, it's as much artistic as it is sport, and I think we gotta look at it from a bigger, bigger window than we're at right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is that you, Mr. Reynolds, put your hand up before? Of course, name and address for the record, please.
Jesse Reynolds, Old Durham Road. Um, Scott said a lot of what I was actually gonna say, creativity aspects. Liability aspect, though, you bring up the North Haven skate park, I don't know if you ever went there, it was behind the fire department on Route 5 in the woods, not well-lit, the ramps were made of metal, they were this high, it was intimidating, and it was not a good park, and that's why nobody went there. I know lots of people from all over the state, old guys like myself, who get up at 7:00 in the morning and drive to all parts of the state to go to concrete skate parks, they're nice places, they're beautiful places, they're installations in parks that people design and build, with the intent of being looked at as well as being ridden upon. This is something that Wallingford would benefit from. We have a lot of places in town where kids hang out where maybe they shouldn't hang out, but if you create a place for them to go and hang out, they'll go and hang out there. A committee's a good idea, because what you're gonna get are people who are gonna be committed to help upkeep the park. My friend who lives in Meriden, but when we go to New Britain, he brings his leaf blower, I bring my broom, and we clean the park before we skate in it, that's what a lot of people do. So, the upkeep, the liability piece, as far as I know, and I looked it up in the state, the only way that we would be liable for anybody being injured in that skate park is if they fell on something that we did not maintain a repair. And metal ramps, like the ones in North Haven, like the ones in East Haven that they just took out, fall apart from use, they also sink into the ground as you use them, and people trip on that too, so you need a poured concrete park. The 2,000 to 5,000 square foot estimate, it's based on a population size, ideally for a town the size of Wallingford, you'd probably be looking at more like 10,000 square feet, but 10,000 square feet at $50 a square foot, that's a lot of money. But, a place like Lake George, New York, has a 6,000 square foot skate park that's built into a place that they use to actually process the water for the lake. So, the rainwater, the snow, all of that, it all flows down into this giant aquifer that processes the water and then allows it to get processed in the lake. In the middle of that park is a skate park with a fountain in the middle where all the water goes in. So, you can be all kinds of creative in places like, you know, watershed areas, places that used to flood where you can't build houses, there's all kinds of things you can do. And imagine, if you think about stuff like this. So, anyway, this is just my part, I have lots, I, I helped Finn with the presentation, so, if you have any questions, let me know. Thanks.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Mr. Reynolds brought up money. I would hope that the council sees, it seems to have support on the council, would move quickly on this, setting a, a committee up. One of the things that he brought up money was that there's this thing called ARPA money. This would be an ideal use of ARPA money, to provide children and adults an outdoor activity, and that's what ARPA money was there for. And this would be a perfect use for it, because coming budgets are gonna be tough, hopefully they can, you can move quickly on this to get money appropriated. If he's talking a half million, so it's a million, million and a half dollars, it's not gonna break the ARPA fund, hopefully you'll go ahead and do it quicker than later. Thank you.
Anyone else? Bring it back to the council, Counselor Allenson.
I just had one more suggestion for the committee, based on, um, Mr. Reynolds' comments. Maybe we could also get a few students or youth, um, representatives involved if there was said committee going to happen?
That, that was the driving force in 2008.
Sure, I, I bet.
So, it was compromised, or, not compromised, um, compiled of high school kids and parents of those kids that worked on it.
That's awesome to hear. Thank you, that's all.
Counselors Andrew.
Just really quick, since, you know, you kind of identified, um, that, you know, we would have to get in touch with Park and Rec for our next step, they're here, I, I'm gonna suggest, since, since you, Vin, you brought it up about using, potentially using ARPA funds, been brought up by a member of the public. Over in Cheshire, they received 8.5 million in ARPA funds altogether, and they dedicated $2 million of that to their, their Bartlam South, um, phase of that park over there. So, we're not looking at $2 million, but if we're, if we're, if you want to look at it, we got a stars aligning type scenario again. We've got a level of interest, a, a, and a couple of potential areas, um, we, you've got a presentation that's active, and we've got funds that this is applicable for, and it, and it goes back to the discussions we have at ARPA, um, at the ARPA meetings. Anything we do that we put in as part of the budget, there's always a segment of the community that says, I'm never gonna use that, why is it being put in as part of my taxes? Um, I, I have no family, I have no kids, my kids are grown, left, right, up, down. If we were ever to do a park, if we end up doing Community Pool, if we end up doing something, there's always a segment of the population that says, this is a burden on my taxes, and I get impacted and I get no use out of it. When we look at ARPA funds, it removes the impact from all the individuals that are not gonna leverage it, and we have the capability to do it, and it's a permitted use of the funding through the act. So, I really want to encourage that, if this is on demand, I'm not suggesting we fast-track it or do it wrong, but we don't let the wheels of slow government take over. If, if we got some speed on this, just keep it moving, and I, I would suggest next steps then. Thank you.
I will, uh, I will be sure to attend the next Park and Rec Commission meeting with advocates, and we will present our case and, and see how they feel about it. And stay in touch, Mr. Michaels.
We had moved on from public comment on this item, but, um, come on up.
Sean McGlynn, 29 Pomeroy Avenue, and I apologize, I know you stopped, covered comment, but I was watching your meeting while meeting my garden, and I noticed that you were talking about a skate park. While I think that's an awesome idea, um, we've gotten a couple of community members[1798.83] While I think that's an awesome idea, we've gotten a couple of community members together and we're calling it the Wallingford Youth Initiative. And what we're doing is discussing the issues we're having with the teens, well, tweens, that age group.
I guess the microphone isn't picking you up. You might want to get a little closer.
All right. Woo, scary. All right. So we've started a group called the Wallingford Youth Initiative. And what we've done is we've met and discussed some of the issues that are going on with the youths in our town, especially at Dulittle Park and up and down Main Street and Center Street. And what we want to do is, well, a skate park's a great idea. We don't know if that's what the kids want. So what we'd really like to do, and I'd love to work with you, and I know our group would love to work with you, is not just arbitrarily pick an area or a skate park or whatever you want to put in, but to involve those kids so that they can take ownership of whatever it is. And we meet their needs instead of just putting something in that we think they're going to like. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So that's why I ran over here in case you guys are going to, you know, give it money or something. Because there is a group addressing those issues who would love to work with you. But like I said, we really want to make sure that the kids take ownership of whatever we do because they'll be more inclined to use it and they'll be less inclined to vandalize it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you want to send me an email and invite me to your next gathering, I will participate.
All right. I think.
My cards, my cards were cut from the budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. I guess we are on to item 10.
That's me too, huh?
The Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management and Creating a Food Waste Diversion Program with a Deep Sustainable Materials Management Grant.
How's that? All right.
You have another presentation?
Yeah.
Who gets ancillary credit for this one?
Nobody. I did this all by myself. All right. This will be quick, I promise. I became aware not too long ago that, you know, through different stories, that Meriden was awarded a grant and was working with a private company on a pilot program in a, on a food waste diversion program. And I read about that and I said, wow, this is interesting. Removing compostable food from the waste stream. I know the company HQ is working on a, on a program where they're basically composting food waste, generating methane, possibly even generating electricity from the whole process. But it's, it's an advanced form of recycling. But more importantly, it, it's, it offers the option of removing a large portion of our solid waste from what we have to pay to dispose of. So as I looked, and I've always been interested in these types of things. And I thought, wow, okay, we can, we know from what's been going on that our disposal costs for solid waste are going to go up while we continue to figure out where it's going to go. We're trying very desperately as a state, I know, to, to do as much recycling as we can, but that, there's some problems there. But the whole idea of everybody throwing away food in their garbage, that's just volume that we have to pay to dispose of. And it's, so if there's a way that we can do something environmentally friendly, smart, and reduce our disposal costs, that that's something I think would be worth looking into. And I discovered that there was this program at the state where they established something called the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. You can read all this on your own. And they got together in September of 2020 to talk about different things. Ways we can reduce waste, reduce pricing, costs, just do all sorts of things that are possible out there. Things such as unit-based pricing, food scraps, that's what I was thinking about specifically, and other types of things. And it turned out that 86 municipalities signed on to this. I'm going to skip through this because it's getting late. But the food scraps collection program was an idea where, in conjunction with private business, if people were to segregate their food scraps, they could be collected and brought to eventually to a different facility that would then compost those food scraps and generate energy. What's the benefit for something that is clearly a little extra work on the part of the average homeowner? Reduce cost potentially in their garbage bill. And who's, and I think that's something we have to take a close look at. So the state put out a grant program and it was pretty much all-encompassing. They would cover all sorts, sorts of expenses if you wanted to put together some type of pilot program or look into something along the lines of being creative in how we're managing our solid waste. Again, so if you could read through this again and it covered all sorts of things. But what I noticed was the members signed on to a large, a long statement. But basically, it was a recognition that by working together, communities could achieve some pretty, pretty admirable goals of reducing our waste streams, reducing our, our cost for disposal, and being forward-thinking in how we're handling our waste. I, I'm sharing a section of that statement because in the third paragraph, you can see my little cursor's moving around there. They point out clearly that the closure of the Wallingford Waste Energy Facility and potentially, I think they're talking about the Hartford Facility, but I'm not going to say that. Whatever the Miro facility was, I wasn't able to figure that one out today. It presents a real possibility that we're going to be taking a backward step in how we're handling our, our solid waste. And we've, but we've talked about this for years as situations at the Covanta Plant have played out. We were part of a five-community coalition, if you will, co-op. And it worked very well for many years. But then we found out, okay, we're, as the trash-to-energy plant stopped operating and then over time, even the transfer station itself was problematic. We saw writing on the wall that we were going to have to make decisions that could lead to higher costs and drastically fewer options. So when I saw this, that just the example of Wallingford's facility being mentioned as part of the problem, and then all the communities that signed on to take part in this, I was just a little disappointed to say the least that we weren't. You can see that there's 86, almost 90 communities now that are part of this coalition. Purple towns are the members. The grant program in question, it's over. And we missed out on that, which is, which is fine. But I would like to know why, why we didn't look into that as a community. There's the announcement of the Meriden program. But it led me to the following questions. First of all, and these, these questions are clearly going to be for the administration primarily, but not, not solely. What is the current status of the property that previously known as the Covanta Facility? And I asked that because I started thinking, well, there's people out there utilizing new technologies, looking for ways to separate food wastes. That's going to require facilities, processing and/or operational facilities, even at the very least, transfer stations. And we had one. We don't own it, but we had one right in town. And is it possible that that facility could still be redeveloped as some type of hub or processing or transfer facility as part of a statewide food waste diversion program? Why? Because every time when Wallingford's been involved in this, we've benefited greatly. We're still at the tail end of spending money that we accumulated through fees that we, we received as a host facility for many, many years. Not to mention our own fees were reduced. So Wallingford residents received benefits for years as being a host community. Now, we're not talking about putting in another trash-to-energy plant. We're not talking about putting in anything that might be environmentally questionable. On the, it's really just the opposite. Are we able to encourage the ownership of that facility to partner up with us and get involved in a plan to, to become a part of this waste, food waste diversion program? This, this effort. Trash-to-energy plant generated energy. It was used by companies nearby. Well, if a food waste composting facility can generate methane and leads to electricity production, perhaps that could also be a part of this, leading to possible pilot payments, fees from other municipalities, certainly reduced overall disposal fees and so on and so on. So I see this as a, as a possibility for us moving forward. And before I ask my last question, I would point out that I did contact the department and was, was told that there are still ongoing meetings all the time of this coalition. And it's not just about this type of program. It's about everything having to do with waste management. And there's actually, there was a meeting this afternoon. They said they weren't sure about what it would take for Wallingford to become a member of that coalition, whether it requires the administration to sign on or whether the town council could choose to sign on to it and become a part of it. But there is a lot going on, even though we missed out on the, the recent efforts to put out grants for pilot programs, there, there, it's anticipated that there'll be further grants and further programs coming up down the road that now we will be made aware of because I'm on the mailing list, if you will. But I'd like us to look into becoming a part of this. So at that point, I guess I would just ask, and I, what the administration's position is overall on all of this, and I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, when we were, are you still meeting with the other communities that we were a part of? And did this ever come up? And why didn't we participate? And so on and so forth. Really, I'll leave it at that.
Well, it's a pilot program and there are unknowns associated with it. I know that when I've heard explanations, there are issues concerning odors. There's issues concerning the vectors, rodents, other vermin that are attracted by food waste. Part of this was to mix food waste with compost, other compost material. And, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about how you control the environmental impacts of that. I've been told that you, there's a $600,000 machine that helps to aerate and everything, but that you're either leasing that or buying one. I'm not sure how that's handled. Level, different colored bags that you put different, different food waste in and then they're collected and ultimately have to be split out from the municipal solid waste. It's a handling issue. I understand from HQ that there is not much of a reduction in cost, if any. I think they are involved with Quantum, I think, or a location or business named that in Southington. There are a lot of unknowns with this. In addition, of course, truck traffic. So now truck traffic comes in. If it becomes a regional center, then we deal with truck traffic. And if you're dealing with food waste, what's the potential for substances being leaking, leaking out of the truck, et cetera? We certainly had plenty of experience with the trash-to-energy facility and issues concerning the collection of waste and bringing them to Wallingford. The current transfer station is still operating. It's owned by a private business. That business purchased the location from Covanta. And I don't know if, I suspect they're probably interested in getting into this. But then again, we become a site for multiple trucks coming from other areas with the associated issues concerning that. So there, there's a lot to be concerned about. It's a pilot program. Whether it works or not still has to be determined. I just do not feel now is the time for Wallingford to try to entertain getting involved with, with a regional or, and I don't think it would be any different if we're just trying to do it for ourselves. So, I mean, those are my thoughts at this point. Time will tell.
So Mr. Mayor, you were aware, you were aware of the grant program that we could have made applications for?
Aware of a pilot grant program and the concerns I just stated made me take a, a long, long look at it and determined that I didn't think it was something we really wanted to get involved with right now.
I don't recall this discussion, ever having this discussion with us, though. Do you recall that?
I don't believe it's been the subject for council meeting, no.
Okay. All right. So at this point, I think the administration's position's pretty clear. But I noticed, I was, I was attracted to this initially by becoming aware of the, of the pilot program that Meriden was initiating. It was 1,000 households. It was done in conjunction with HQ. And they want, and they, they have all these ideas, all these, probably all the same questions about, you know, how could this work? Which is the whole, I guess, the whole point of a pilot program. You know, let's try it out. Let's see what happens. Let's see if this can be productive and let's see if it could work for us. And if it proves to be successful, we can expand it into the, you know, larger inner city, intersection of the city or so forth and so on. So I just, I disagree that it's not something that is worth investigating. But the administration has, has their opinion on that. I guess I would ask if there's any interest on the part of the town council to further investigate this. Because I'm very interested in having us become a part, at least of this coalition, of other communities that is looking into all of the issues of solid waste. And this, I, I don't believe there's ever really a big benefit to operating as an island. Not in this day and age. Not when there's, there are so many opportunities to work with other communities on common problems. Solid waste disposal is certainly one. And keep, you know, doing a go-it-alone and we might find ourselves on the outside looking into the opportunities that we may regret having missed. So if anyone wants to continue to investigate this, let me know. I wanted to put it before you. I got my answers. And I'm going to continue to be a part of this regardless of where everybody else is on it. Thank you.
Councilor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilor Tessa, for your, your presentation. You know, I will share that one of the things that I love to do is to garden. I've got a prolific vegetable garden. I really love to, and, you know, this year I want to step further and we started the compost. And, you know, I want to thank the mayor because I was in the building one day and outside on the table there is a flyer about composting. And it helped me, you know, because I was able to, you know, access the resources that are on there to learn a little bit more. And, you know, it's amazing. Every morning I have a K-cup in my Keurig. And, you know, normally I go throw it out, but I've started to peel back the tinfoil and dump it in a bag and, you know, we collect it. And it's amazing how much less that, that K-cup weighs. I, I, you know, and I think every time, you know, I used to put this whole thing in the trash. And, you know, I've really come to appreciate that, you know. So I would be all in favor of us having some sort of advertising, you know, campaign about composting or, you know. I learned on the internet, I took a, an old trash can, a very heavy-duty trash can, and I put, I drilled holes all around and underneath and on the on the top and stuff, and I raise it up and, you know, and, um, I'm looking forward to that product being able to put in my garden for next year, you know, to, to recycle and bring it back. So, you know, I think, I would be all in favor of something like that. But one of the things that scares me about the presentation and the program is I saw some buzzwords. You know, they're gonna pay for enforcement cameras. That leads me to believe that if you engage in this program, that you have to make a representation, that there will be some sort of compliance. Um, I, I think that's something we need to look at, because not everybody has the opportunity to compost. Um, you know, um, my wife complains because she can't always pull back the tinfoil on the things, right? So, you know, you get a senior citizen, and we come through with this mandate and says everybody's gotta compost, or whatever the criteria is. I don't know that all of our people can, yeah, it's, um, purchasing installation of truck cameras, right? And other-
Just showing that this is an eligible expense. If you chose to, uh, install cameras on the trucks so that you could make sure that they're following the guidelines of a program that you institute, that would be an eligible expense. I don't believe one of the guiding principles of this organization or the program is to, is to put in, uh, surveillance cameras all over everybody's backyard to see what they're doing with their garbage.
Well, that's a question, so, you know, because I-
This is just an eligible expense, in case you wanted to put a camera on a truck.
Yeah, but we don't know the criteria by which, you know, you take money and the strings that come, come attached to it. So, you know, I, you know, that's one of my concerns. I, I thank you for sharing the presentation beforehand, and I had an opportunity to look at it. Um, but I think we should be promoting, um, you know, through the website, through TV, that kind of stuff, um, you know, on our YouTube, government television, that, you know, people should look into composting. I, I don't see a problem with that. It should be a voluntary thing. Um, but I thank you for the presentation, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Certainly. So HQ has cameras on their trucks that watch your canister be emptied into their truck. And particularly the recycling they're concerned about, they want to make sure that what's in your bulk recycling is actually going to work with their processing machinery. I suspect that's the kind of camera they're talking about, is to, is to make sure that what's coming out of your compost bin is appropriate for that section of the truck. Um, so anyway. Counselors Andrea.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could, could I ask you to go back to the map, um, with all the other towns on it? So these are all members that are already in the pilot program, is that correct?
No, no, they're members of what's called the Coalition, Connecticut Coalition of for Sustainable Material Management. There's a bunch of communities that have joined up to be a part of a dialogue and that, and to be made aware of any programs. I mean, if you look at what's, what's, I have other slides, believe me. If you look at other things they're doing, there, there's 20 of them, you know what I mean? That may have nothing to do with food waste. It's all different things. So it's, they're just trying to get together and, and, and share information about, you know, managing our waste in a more sustainable way.
So, so it goes beyond-
Because what we're doing now isn't sustainable.
So, so it goes beyond just that one pilot program? This is other elements, too? I, I misunderstood that, so I'm-
My, my apologies.
No, no, I, I didn't, I, because I read the material that you sent us, too. So I, I wasn't exactly sure. I thought this was just a pilot program, but it, it kind of lends to another point. Um, and, and I, you made most of the point already, so I'm not gonna repeat all of this, but, you know, does lend what we have to look forward to in the future with being able to remove solid waste in this town. And, you know, everything at some point in its, its history was a first starter or a pilot program, you know? And that includes the electric division in this town. At some point, there was a huge reach to go out and install electricity in a town where nobody else had it. And we reap that benefit today, a hundred some odd years later. So, um, to answer your question on, you know, is there some support up here? I would support looking into this. I would support getting involved with communities that are already doing some of the legwork. We can learn from some of the stuff they've already done. And if we come up with any ideas of our own, we could share it, and they could turn our, turn us around and say, "That won't work because of this," and we'll learn, or they'll go, "Oh, my God, we never thought of that." And it might be something moves forward. But I, I think there is no harm in trying to work with other communities and other entities to try to figure out solutions for things that are definitely gonna become problems in the near future. And solid waste is a problem, it's been a problem for years, and it's only getting worse because of prepackaging, um, elements of being shipped. We talk about the truck traffic that's already on South Cherry Street and John Street from Amazon and prior, the, uh, waste transfer facility. But we've got more and more trucks and vehicles on that road already, and all the different things that we ship, and all the cardboard's being recycled, and all the other packing elements are there. These are still solutions yet to come. So I'm, I would be encouraging, trying to find out more if, you know, if, if we've got the capability to kind of move forward on that. So again, I, I thank you for bringing the presentation forward. Thank you very much.
Anything else from the council? Comments from the public? Mr. Gross.
I was gonna make a joke, but I won't. Uh, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Debbie's ready to go. That's what it's, um, I see Chairman Cervone nodding in agreement. Um, Mira is, just so you know, Mira's scheduled to close. So there will be a, Mira's the largest waste-to-energy plant in the state of Connecticut. We don't use that, well, we do use them to some degree because we divert trash there right now. Our trash gets burned in Bristol, for the most part. Um, the way that these things work, the best way that they work is, like the mayor said, you need municipal pickup. Um, you, you can't have private haulers. And I don't think the mayor's ready for that, but you need municipal. This has been discussed for years, these things in other towns. It doesn't really, it's hard to work, um, because you have to separate. It's a great thing to do, though, because it's great for the environment, and as Counselor Fishbein says, it does make great organic material. Or it can make methane, and you can make energy out of it. Um, so it's, it's really good at that. The way that it works in a lot of community across the country is pay-as-you-go. If you had to pay for your own trash by weight, people want to divert, they want to get their dollars down. Uh, it is being discussed in Hartford, I don't know if it still is. It was discussed years ago. Counselor Fishbein's nodding somewhat tentatively yes, I think. Uh, pay-as-you-go would force people, you know, because it would get your, your total bill down on how much you throw away. These are all things that, I mean, it's a great program, just to Attorney Fishbein's point earlier about the folder that was out there. Years ago, the town of Wallingford had a recycling committee. And in that recycling committee, used to give out compost. Um, somebody agreed, yeah. They used to give out compost containers. So this has been going on in town here. They, we don't, the committee's not in service anymore, and the town doesn't do that anymore. But those are ways that you can get rid of a lot of waste right now. Town could become, give away these composts, explain it online. We can get a lot, rid of a lot of trash. And, I don't know if this comment's gonna go over that well. Um, it's, it's sad that the mayor makes the decision that doesn't even share the information with the council. I mean, it's, it's sad, because there's nine counselors that are representing the community at large, and this is something that should have gone before the council. Anytime there's a grant available, maybe the mayor's not for it, and maybe this isn't a perfect grant, uh, application at this time, but the council should still be aware of it. Thank you.
Seeing no hands, Counselor Testa, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
Anyone, can you hit the power button on the projector?
Can I? Probably not. Yes. Yeah, I'll get to it.
All right. On to item 11, discussion regarding the EDC advertisement of ARPA discussion. Counselor Fishbein, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do see members of the EDC in the audience. I didn't know if they were going to be a part of this.
Counselors Andrea actually requested their presence.
So I guess it's customary if you just let us know who you are for the record.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to make an opening statement, if that's okay.
Uh, Counselor Fishbein, do you mind? If you could first identify yourself for the record.
Hank Baum, uh, member of the EDC and a sub-chair, the, um, Planning and Zoning Subcommittee.
Yeah, the mic isn't really picking you up. It's working.
Hank Baum, Chair of the Subcommittee of Planning and Zoning on the EDC.
Mr. Ryan, I just, everyone else.
Tim Ryan, Economic Development Specialist.
Rob Fritz, Member of the Economic Development Marketing Committee.
Since it's, it's our item, and we didn't get an opportunity to say anything before the flyer went out, I don't know why an opening statement would be of, of order, but certainly out of respect, uh, that's what you would like to do, I, um, I'm willing to defer, but, um-
So why don't you go ahead, Mr. Baum?
I appreciate that. First and foremost, our chairman, Joe Mira, sends his sincere regret. Joe is scheduled for elective surgery today and was not able to meet with you. He wanted to be sure that you understood the reason why he was absent. Our vice chair is also traveling on business, not able to join us. So you are, um, we are the second string, I guess, uh, here to discuss this with you.
The lucky ones.
Um, I'd also like to state that, uh, before our discussion, that the EDC has always been, uh, considered the town council as a partner. Uh, the EDC exists to support businesses and spur economic development in Wallingford, and our intent of the flyer that's in question was to inform businesses of the scheduled meeting to discuss the small business application and invite them to tell their stories so that you could hear firsthand from the businesses themselves. We understand that, um, some of you have had, uh, did not like some of the wording in that flyer in question, and we have taken that to point, and we've learned from it. That being said, we welcome the discussion.
Thank you. Um, you know, I guess one of the concerns about the flyer is that, uh, the EDC, I guess itself, did not draft it. It was presented to the body, um, drafted by someone else. Um, so, I mean, there are no minutes that are reflected, you know, review of this document. There's no, was there ever a vote on this document?
What makes you think it wasn't drafted by the EDC?
Well, in-
Let me just, let me just state that it was drafted by the EDC.
Who on the EDC drafted it?
Me.
Okay, well-
So I drafted it. Has it been our process? We then sent it out to the commission for review, any edits, and came back and sent it out.
Okay, well, I'm looking at an email dated the morning of June 6th from Stacy. It says, "Good morning, commissioners. Tim asked me that I send you an electronic version of the COVID relief flyer we are distributing to as many small businesses and nonprofits as we can to encourage attendance at the critical town council meeting on Tuesday, June 14th. I will have a couple of hundred printed copies at the meeting tonight for you to take and distribute and deliver. We cannot leave them in mailboxes. I'm also sending this out on our digital channels today." Am I to understand, based upon that, that there was prior review by the EDC commission?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And when did that? Because I, I've reviewed the minutes and understand that this email came out June 6th, the morning of. The minutes of the prior meeting make no reference of a flyer. So when was the flyer previously reviewed by the committee?
Before that email went out.
At a meeting?
No, no.
Okay, well-
So in between meetings, when we, when we learned of the item that was going to be on the agenda, we felt it's in the best interests of our, of our small business community to make them aware of the fact that, uh, this item would be discussed, the application would be discussed at the council, council meeting. And we were inviting them and encouraging them to attend, to participate in the conversation with the council.
Well, Tim, we recognize that I sent an FOI request, and one of those, um, I asked for any correspondences involving the flyer. And you did, thank you, you did drop off the packet today. The very first email in this packet is of 9/6. So by what, you're saying that prior to that date, this was reviewed? It wasn't on an agenda? The minutes don't reflect. So when was it reviewed by the members of the commission?
You had also asked for the agendas for the last six months' meetings or what have you?
No, I asked specifically for the ones that mentioned the agenda.
But the ARPA update is on our agenda for the last six months. So during the ARPA update, we talk about the status of the ARPA funds and the decision-making process throughout. So, you know, it, it sounds as if you're trying to find something wrong with the process. And we know each other well enough-
I know.
-that we did nothing wrong. We, we are sent, we, I mentioned earlier, the intent of the flyer is very simply to make the small business community aware of the fact that this item was going to be discussed on the agenda and encourage them to come and take part in the conversation.
Well, it was also, it was also accusatory.
I'm sorry?
It was also accusatory.
It was accurate.
Well, I, I still don't-
If you find something there that you say is factually inaccurate, then please point it out, and if that is the case, I will publicly apologize. I, I don't believe that there's anything in the flyer that is, is in any way, shape or form inaccurate. And, and I really, I prefer not to spar with you. I mean, we are on the same team here.
Yep.
I would prefer that we talk about intent, all right?
Yep.
Because our intent was pure, it was sound, and it was solid.
Okay, so I asked for any minutes that referenced the flyer, and none of your minutes other than the ones-
Last week's.
Last week's mentioned the flyer.
All right, we didn't send it out until after that meeting.
Understood. But none of the minutes of the last six months that you talked about that had this very general ARPA update, none of the agendas addressed the flyer, none of the minutes addressed the flyer.
Greg, the, the, we didn't discuss the flyer for six months. We discussed the flyer once we learned that the agenda was, the agenda item was gonna be on the council agenda scheduled for tonight. So we were in between meetings, and we said, you know, it's probably in our best interest. And to help you understand as well, I have, I have mentioned any number of times at the meetings, subcommittee meetings, that the voice of the small business community is essential as you are making your decision and, and charting that course. And so since our last two EDC meetings ago, but before our last one, this agenda item came up on, on, on the 14th for tonight.
Is there a reason why-
In between those meetings, we didn't have a meeting scheduled, so let's, let's consider putting a marketing piece together to encourage businesses to get here.
That ref, that's reflected in the June 6th minutes?
It's because in the June 6 minutes is when the entire commission reviewed the marketing piece and said, "Okay, let's send it."
And what was the vote?
We didn't officially vote. You know, we just, it was a discussion, and, and it was discussed to send it.
Okay.
And if we were- And if we were remiss in taking a formal vote, okay, slap our hands, but it's, it's the, the intent and the timing is, there's nothing nefarious about what we've done.
Well, the interesting thing is that all of the emails, not, well, we'll say it this way, none of the emails reference any prior conversation. None of the emails reference a prior review. You know, normally you'd say, you know, here's the latest version of the flyer that we talked about at the meeting, right? None of them say that. It says, this is the flyer, this is going out.
We actually talk to each other, all right? Not every single dialogue is, is email, is an email back and forth. We actually talk to each other at the EDC.
Okay.
We have a great rapport amongst the commissioners and our, our one and a half person office, and we do the best we can with what we've got, but.
So.
Stand by what we did and why we did it, and, and I would ask you, it's not about process, it's about intent, and, and I think our intents were sound, solid, and we stand behind them. And if, if offense was taken, and apparently there was some, it was not our intent, but we wanted to bring people out.
Part of the problem is that there's a philosophical difference here. The administration believes that this money is for an intention that almost every municipality in this state disagrees with. North Haven gave absolutely no money to small businesses. They said they got enough.
They also don't have an economic development department that stands and supports small business.
Well, but that.
Their selectmen is their economic development person.
So. Maybe that's the fundamental problem here, because the ordinance that creates the EDC doesn't say anything about small business. Doesn't say anything, what the body does. It totally defers to the state statute. State statute doesn't say anything about small business. So maybe that's the fundamental problem, because all the state statute says is, "The commission shall establish an economic development commission for the promotion and development of economic resources in such municipality." That's it. Doesn't say anything about small business. So, you know, is having a good paved road beneficial to economic development in a municipality? Sure. Is having clean, safe parks beneficial to economic development? Sure. Well, those examples really have nothing to do with small business, so maybe, maybe that's part of the problem.
Are you suggesting that we no longer support small business?
No, I'm not, I'm saying that's, that's a portion of it, but to say, you know, if, if, you know, like Middlefield, they're going to more than likely use all of their money to repair a culvert that is, people are having difficulty getting from one place to another. I mean, that's a smaller town.
There's a half a dozen businesses in the whole town over there.
Understood.
Twenty-one hundred businesses.
But they're also given money apportioned based upon their population, things like that. Southington used the majority of their money to put in sewers. I mean, that's, you know, you know, Meriden, part of their money went to put in outdoor classrooms for, for their schools. Now, we know that, you know, the Board of Education gets ARPA funds also, but, you know, the fundamental problem is, is that we are looking at, one of the projects is community pool, and unfortunately, the administration won't even put the thing out to bid, so we can't get those numbers. And, and then we've got a commission of the town that's, you know, putting out lobbying material, saying that we're the bad guys. I mean, quite frankly, for almost a year, Council Test is down there saying, when are we going to get moving on ARPA? We gotta do something. I mean, the last couple of meetings, the consultant wasn't available, you know, we've asked questions, there's significant problems with the applications. We'd like to get stuff done, but we're getting friction. So bringing it back to where we are. Is there a reason why only certain businesses were sent this flyer?
We sent it out on our digital channels, our email channels through LinkedIn, and we don't have a database that includes every single business in the entire town. There were also several commissioners that took it upon themselves to work quite diligently to hand them out, some of the, like North Plains Industrial Road, some of the areas that have got, they're mostly populated by smaller businesses that we believe, you know, we have, we have stated from our standpoint that a small business definition would be 60 employees of FTEs or less. That is something, obviously, that's up to this body to decide, so we tried to get that message out to as many of those businesses as, as we possibly could.
Have you seen the response that prompted this, the Facebook response from Suzanne Mersky? I don't know.
We did not put anything on Facebook.
No, have you seen it?
I have not, no.
Okay, so, you know, th, this is part of the problem. Someone, she says, "Someone dropped this off at my salon. Anyone know anything about this and how to find out info as to why some council members want to reduce monies available to help struggling businesses?" I mean, that is the accusation that is implied in the document and that springs forward from there, because quite frankly, you know, when I look at, I went on the Department of Treasury's website, and, and I've read so much about this thing. Nowhere does it say that we have to use the, the money for businesses, nowhere. So to imply that, you know, the money is only for businesses and that we are doing something nefarious by reducing that?
Counselor Fishbein, if I can just comment. This is not a discussion or argument or disagreement with how the money is being spent. And if that's the interpretation, if you read the, if you read the document, it's not what we think was inferred. Where, and I'm, I'm reading it right here, it says, you know, I'm, I'm sure this is what you're referring to, we believe the tactic is misdirected and not aligned, but the tactic that we were referring to in here was not how you spend the money, that's totally up to the town council how the money is spent. And there's going to be disagreements among people who read this. If you send it to a thousand people, there's going to be a thousand different interpretations and opinions. We have no control over that. Where we were disagreeing, and that's the implied disagreement that you're bringing up, is the process. It's our job to represent the businesses in this community, and of all the various committees and organizations in town, the EDC is the closest to the business community of any of them, and we're their voice. And as a result, our simple premise was, before those decisions are made, we want to make sure that all of the potential people impacted by this are heard, so that you can make a more informed decision. And since we felt that through communications with businesses in the area, they were totally unaware of the ARPA funding, they were totally unaware of the process. I know there's different sources of communication that the town takes, Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, many of the business owners are not on Facebook, nor are they getting onto Facebook to read what's going on in the community. So a number of the, the businesses that I spoke to were completely unaware of this and were very appreciative of the fact that they were, that this money might be available because they've been tremendously harmed, they have not been reimbursed through the PPP, and they're very worried about the, a potential upcoming recession, that they may not be able to survive. So our only intent was to get their voice in front of the council, so that you see the big picture and the need. How you decide to spend those funds are totally up to you, and, and, and we're not arguing or discussing that and, or challenging that. Again, our only intent was to get you all of the potential information, to get all of the candidates involved, get their voices heard, and then you make whatever decision you think is the most appropriate use of funds.
I understand the intent. The problem is this, this clause, "Several members of your town council are attempting to reduce the monies available for small businesses by allocating large sums of money to community projects before the business and nonprofit needs are determined." And, and part of the problem is, is that there's a reliance aspect. People are being told that money is going to be available for businesses. That has not been determined, okay? And that has not been.
I don't see that in the, I don't see that that was stated in this paper, that money would be available for businesses.
What we, well, whomever decided to, to put this thing out and, you know.
Again, our, as Tim said, we all live in this town, we're on the same page, we're not here to, to, to compete with the town council. You, we certainly acknowledge and, and understand and recognize, you decide how this money is being spent. Again, not, not to repeat myself, our fundamental responsibility is to represent the businesses in the town, and through our daily conversations with many of the businesses, they were totally unaware of the process and that the funds were even available. So we said, well, all we want to do is make sure that the town council has all that information before they're allocating the money, okay? So if you don't know what the problem is, you don't know what you don't know. And it's really, listen, we, you guys, we live in this town, the decisions you make impact all of us, so we care about that, we vote for, for everyone on that, on the town council, so it's important to us.
I would.
We just want to make sure their voices are heard, and then you can make whatever decision you feel is appropriate.
Yeah, so I, I guess the EDC has chosen not to do anything, some sort of flyer about community pool and the fact that the mayor just refuses to put it out to bid, because that would be economic development also. So certainly having nice amenities in the town, because the role is not small business, the role is economic development of the town. In fact, under the statute, it says, "The commission shall conduct research into the economic conditions and trends in the municipality, shall make recommendations to appropriate officials and agencies of municipality regarding action to improve its economic condition and development." That is under the state statute what created you folks. So, you know, I think having a nice pool would be something that would fall right in line, if, if the commission agrees. But anyway, on May 19, I think, Tim, you had one of these emails forwarded to us. You sent it, well, Debbie, actually, it came from the mayor's office, but I think, Tim, you were involved in this. Linda sent an email to Debbie to send us a particular email. You had spoken with a small business. Not going to name the small business at this point, you may recall as I read portions of this. It's addressed to you, and it said that wanted to give you some insight into the economic pressures that their company has been involved with for the last two years. Since the beginning of 2020, they've been highly impacted, like other businesses, from the pandemic. The long-term results of the pandemic have greatly impacted the productivity of the business. COVID has even encompassed the loss of life from employees in, in certain companies. We participated in the PPP program, which was a big help in weathering the first financial impact of the storm, and now are desperate, in desperate need of some additional financial assistance due to incurred losses and additional costs. Our company is a very dedicated workforce of longtime loyal workers, most are local residents, our staff is made up of proud military veterans, women, mothers, Filipinian, Native Americans, and other citizens. We are asking for your help in participating in the ARPA assistance. I left a lot of the, the meat out, but, you know, this is one of these things that we're hearing about, right? And, and you would have a business like this get ARPA funds, because they've been negatively impacted, right? That's, that's sort of the, the tussle here.
We would think they certainly should be considered, sure. I mean, the, the, the EDC has been consistent in their messaging from day one in that we simply are suggesting that we get an application into the market, so that we can determine what the business need is, so that you can get a complete picture before we start allocating money. That's as simple as it gets, that's all we've ever asked for.
Sure, and one of the things we're dealing with is the application and, and what's going to be in the application.
Correct.
So I'm going to tell you, with regard to this particular business, because I, I did do some due diligence. And, you know, this particular entity was sued during the pandemic. And they were sued because, you know, in, in reviewing this this afternoon, I was going to read, I was going to read some of this stuff. It's the, probably the most egregious case of discrimination racially, gender-wise, that I have ever seen. A judgment entered mere months ago for approximately $400,000 against this entity for regularly using the N-word, the C-word in the business. Now, you're sitting there saying you should give money to these businesses. We're saying.
I'm not sitting here saying giving money to any business, I am sitting here saying that we should come up with an application process that properly and thoroughly vets every potential business that applies.
And I'm saying.
And that would probably, that business probably would be eliminated through a, through a good, sound process.
And, and the applications that we have would not have ferreted out this stuff.
That's fine, no, no one is, no one is saying that we shouldn't put together a good application. We, we submitted our first version of application.
But while we're working on the applications, we're getting accused.
You can't both talk at the same time.
We're trying to have a fair, balanced, equal system.
We want the same thing.
This is not productive. So I don't know where to go from here, but by statute, I mean, the town is a member of the Quinnipiac Chamber of Commerce, or whatever it is today, whatever offshoot. You know, that's there for small businesses. Maybe there needs to be a refocus, because the economic development of our town, from my perspective, from the state statute, is more than just small businesses. You know, once again, you know, this stuff is available online.
Greg, in fairness, you, you know that we don't just focus on small business, we focus on all business. We focus on business recruitment, business retention, this happens to be a retention effort. So our, our charge is broad. You, you know, come on, you guys know that. Listen, I want this to be productive. I, I really, you know, none of us want to spar. We are on the same team, we're on the same page, let's understand what the need is in the marketplace, let's make, give you the, the tools that you need to make good, sound, solid decisions regarding the ARPA funds. We understand that some of that money certainly can be allocated towards community projects, we know that, but our job is to advocate for the businesses, and we trust that you will weigh our responsibilities against your final decisions. And whatever decisions you make, we will respect and we will move forward.
I, I still defer that your sole job is to advocate for the businesses. Businesses is part of our economy, but economic development includes bringing businesses to our town, retention, but also making our town desirable for residents, for, you know, families. You know, as far as I'm concerned, that's economic development, I think that's supported by the state statute. You know, I, I'm still troubled by the creation of this flyer. The documents that I've seen don't comport. I will tell you that when I look at your minutes online, they all say not approved by the EDC. I mean, I just, the, the ones you just approved yesterday say not approved by the EDC, they're online.
Right, so we place them online, so we, by, maybe Attorney Small can help me, but we, we have to put the minutes up online within a certain amount of time, and then we officially approve them at the next meeting. We only meet once a month. So the not approved by the EDC simply means that those are minutes that we review, they're, and they reflect the, the minutes of the meeting, obviously, but they're not officially approved until the next EDC meeting. In the event that there are any changes at the next EDC meeting, then we would go back and we would replace the minutes that are online, so that's why they say that.
I, I appreciate that. I think the ones that I reviewed back a few months still said not approved. Also, the ones that you approved yesterday indicate May 2nd, 2022 on them, on pages two and three, but anyway.
We'll go back and check those, sorry.
And, and page four. So, Mr. Chairman, I defer at this point.
Counselors Andrea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we were, we're having this discussion around this flyer, and that was really the catalyst that, that started all this effort and why this item ended up on the agenda. So. One comment that has been made is that, you know, many business owners are not on Facebook, and that's absolutely simply not true. There are quite a. owners are not on Facebook. And that's absolutely simply not true. There are quite a few businesses that are on Facebook.
I didn't say no businesses. I said, there are many businesses that are not. I didn't say all businesses.
I, I would argue that more business are than are not. I, I, I would argue that, because there's plenty of businesses that are advertising in different Wallingford groups. They do it all the time. Now, you're, it's true, not every business. There could be a good 30, even 40 percent. That's still the majority are. They advertise menus, they, they advertise change of hours, all kinds of different things. And I know this, because that's where I saw this flyer. It got, it got posted on one of my friend's walls, and that's where I read it. The reason it probably didn't proliferate more than it did is I got out in front of this, one particular conversation, and I, and I dropped it from a couple of the groups that I manage, because there's misinformation in this flyer, as far as I'm concerned. And that was one of the elements that I want to talk about, and I want to address this evening. Just because of the amount of exposure it already got, I got into more than, I was going to say a dozen, it's probably not that many, but it was more than half a dozen conversations about why are we removing funding from the Board of Education from ARPA? Just like you identified, a lot of people don't understand the process, they don't understand the information, and this flyer didn't make it any clearer, it made it worse. I'm trying to explain to people that the Board of Education got its own ARPA funding, completely separate from this, completely separate.
I don't mean to interrupt you. You understand, we did not put it on Facebook. We don't post anything on Facebook.
I, I understand, I understand that. And I, and I will, I will acknowledge that that was not your avenue. But you went through your normal avenues, which still gets it out to a lot of people. And the conversation adds from there. And the problem is, if this flyer was just the outline, Wallingford will receive 13.1 million of ARPA funds from the federal government. The EDC has been working to convince our town council to finalize an application process for the COVID relief program, so the financial damage incurred to businesses and nonprofits can be addressed before allocating funds to other avenues such as community projects. Come and support all small businesses and nonprofits. Your attendance will help, all the way to the end of the document. If that was the only thing on this flyer, I wouldn't even be speaking to this flyer, because there's nothing inflammatory about any of that other information, except, come on out and get your voice heard, which I'm a big proponent of, all day long. The element that's causing all the problems is the following, because this is, this is an edit, this is an editorialized comment, and it's laced with opinions. As reported in the media, several members of our town council are attempting to reduce the monies available for businesses and nonprofits by allocating large sums of money to community projects before the business and nonprofit needs are determined. We believe this tactic is misdirected and not aligned with the intention of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Now, it was claimed that the document was accurate, and that there was nothing wrong done there. I want to know what tactic I'm being charged with.
Well, there's nothing inaccurate about that statement at all. In fact, 20 minutes ago, there was discussion about allocating another million and a half dollars to a skate park. We're, we're simply trying to say, as we said before, I mean, that's your, that's your prerogative, if that's what you want to do. But our job is to advocate for businesses. And we accurately stated, again, I, I apologize that it's offended some of you, but we have accurately stated what is happening. The discussion is about allocating sums of money, the five million to community pool, again, earlier conversation, before the business need is determined. All we're asking you to do is, is consider the small business needs before you allocate any more money.
That wasn't my question. What's the tactic? I'm being charged with a tactic.
The tactic is that you, you allocated $5 million to community pool before we had determined what the small business need is.
What is the standard deduction for ARPA for towns?
I don't know the direct, 10 million or something like that?
$10 million. So if we allocated $10 million for the town's use, which is completely allowed under the, under the act, how is that a tactic?
You can, you can allocate all of it for community projects. We're just not advocating that you do that. You don't have to spend any money on community projects if you don't care to. The decision is up to you and the executive branch. So all we're, all we're saying is, is as the conversation progresses, the small businesses, little by little, you keep picking away at the apple, there's less and less left for small businesses. You, you have made it very clear, Jason, earlier, as I think every member of the council has, that you support, advocate, support allocating some funds to small business. No one is suggesting you're leaving them out in the cold completely. But what we're watching is that number gets smaller. And we're simply saying, as we said from day one, started last October, please understand the need in the business community before you spend money. If you, if we find out that the need in the business community exceeds the 13 million, you can still decide that you're only going to do 25% or 50%. It's been discussed. I don't mean to deliberately leave out nonprofits. We quite often, I don't represent the nonprofit community, as you know, but quite often, we work in harmony. But the final decisions are yours. We understand that, as, as Rob stated earlier. It's, I mean, how do you deny that the decisions that have been made thus far have already allocated a portion of the funds before we know-
The very first allocations that this body made was to nonprofits and businesses. An allocation was set aside for 3.25 million dollars for businesses and 3.25 for nonprofits. That is the first action that we took.
Without knowing what the demand or the need in the market is.
There's $150 million that was delivered to businesses in this town from the PPP plan. This is $13 million. I, I'm real bothered by the fact that, you know, we're talking about how we've got this money, and we keep shimming it away, when the very first action was said, before we do anything else, let's put 3.25 here for businesses and 3.25 here for nonprofits. That's good faith saying, look, we acknowledge all sides of this. But to get a flyer out there that says several members of the town council are doing something, it implies something nefarious. And, and it implies we're, we're moving on a tactic that's not allowed or isn't permissible, and it's wrong, because it's totally in line with the final ruling, what the act is. The law that was passed allows these funds to be used in this manner. There are, there are towns, and, and Counselor Fishbein already mentioned it, that aren't putting a dime more towards businesses or nonprofits. They are making it so the distribution of these funds goes to everyone. If a park needs to be updated, repaired, or maintained, we can do it out of the budget and tax everyone, or we do it out of these funds and save everyone. That is a full and fair and equal distribution of all of these funds, if you really want to get granular about it. I couldn't apply for a PPP loan. I don't have a business. So, so are a majority of the other people in town. They didn't get any other relief. Business owners had opportunities, and there's been more than one program, there's been many, and there's another one on deck. And still, the first thing we did was acknowledge that we had a responsibility to look at all facets, and we did that. To, to sit here and say that we're on the same team, and you put a flyer out like that, that's not how I feel anymore.
Understood.
And, and I think that, you know, when you look at this language, you have to really sit down and think, not how is this going to sound, are we going to be offended, but how are the, the people going to read that? Oh my God, what's the government doing now? What are they taking away from us now? What are they keeping and hiding from us now? When, when you've come forward and said, listen, we have our ear to the ground, we're the pulse of the business, you should hear us. I agree. You do way more so than I do. And on the nonprofit side, when I hear from SCOW and I hear from, from United Way, and they say a similar thing about people really in need, I agree. They know way more than I do. But I get in touch with a lot of different people for all kinds of different matters, council matters, social matters, things going on, a couch left on the side of the street. I talk to a lot of people, too. And the amount of confusion that begets, the lack of communication that this town does not put out is amazing. It's amazing. I get, I get commentary from people that, that we're doing things behind closed doors. I go, we don't have to. We can do it right in a public town council meeting, and, and it's recorded, and nobody watches. Nobody understands, nobody listens. They don't dig in, they don't do the homework. My, my problem with this is it was meant to inflame people. We would have had people show up here and said, I don't understand, why are the businesses not being helped? They are. There's $3.25 million sitting there for the process, once we get it started. Counselor Fishbein is right. The only thing that that, that business would have been tripped up on in the application, they got PPP money. We would have rejected them on that. If they didn't, I don't think there was anything, or do you have any lawsuits open? The flyer has nothing for it. There's a lot of different things that we still have to do. And having to consume time combating something like this negative, I don't want to call it negative press, but it's, it's a negative impact from the people, because we can't even go out and have a conversation now without this coming up. I, I think that whole paragraph in there was meant to incite, and it was meant to upset, and I think it was an, an agenda-driven to put pressure on us. And I don't like it. I don't think that was right and fair of the EDC.
We've already stated our opinion. That was not the intent. But you, you're entitled to yours, I understand.
Opinions are one thing, intent is another, all right? And it, and this was rent, in my opinion, with the intent to rile people up. And it's counterproductive. I'll defer for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryan, as I sit here and listen to this, I think your gravest sin was your failure to predict the future. Because the next day when we set the agenda, ARPA wasn't on it. And but for your flyer, we wouldn't be talking about ARPA tonight. And I say that facetiously, thoroughly. I get a sense of what your mission, you, as the EDC, see your mission to be, based upon the comments you've made and, and the responses you've given to the questions you've been asked. Do you think your mission, as you advance it, is inconsistent with the statute that Counselor Fishbein read? I'll tell you, I don't. You can agree with me, you can disagree with me. I think at least you, Mr. Ryan, I'm not sure how many of your other committee members, but at least you have participated in every meeting this council or its ARPA committee have had, when an ARPA has been discussed. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's not the only time you've, you've come and spoken to us, certainly in the past year. You came and talked to us about repurposing the old train station, right?
Yes.
I recall you being part of the discussion about the town's acquisition of 100 Barnes Road, the 3M building.
Correct.
And your, your discussion with us was, had to do with the economic impact of, of its choice to become a municipal building versus keeping it on the tax rules. You could probably think of a few other instances where you've come before us and you've lobbied a position, you've taken a position. And, I mean, to say you've never lobbied this council before ARPA would be inaccurate, would it not?
Agreed.
Okay. So what I saw in your flyer was a certain level of zeal. Am I wrong?
No.
And as you and your commission see it, I mean, you're all volunteers, right?
With the exception of myself, yes.
Thank you. And that is absolutely correct. I think you were supposed to be a part-time employee, but at some point in your career with us, that changed.
That's correct.
And it's probably because you were doing a lot of work for which you weren't getting paid.
No disagreement there.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm struggling with calling to task volunteers who did something that, in my opinion, and mine is only one, was at worst, a little misguided. And, and I'm not even sure that it was. I mean, you alluded to the $5 million allocation of funds towards community pool. During the budget process, we saw another, an attempt at another million dollars in ARPA funds being asserted or allocated. And again, it, it was before we've heard from small businesses or the nonprofit community. We've, we've been lobbied at council meetings, but we haven't sent out the application to determine the need, as you've pointed out. If we were to call to task boards and commissions for everything they did that we didn't agree with, we'd have a lot of long meetings. This council, I'm sorry, the last council, voted to approve data centers at certain places in town. After, it was before this council, it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission was presented with proposed regulations that it ultimately rejected. Now, I wouldn't bring them here to ask them why they didn't approve those proposed regulations. They, they sit in a largely volunteer position. They're somewhat compensated, they get small stipends, but they have an obligation to make decisions based upon the information before them. And if it's inconsistent with something we might have tasked them with, we're stuck with that decision. We're actually going to review something that the Zoning Board of Appeals did a couple of years ago, at some point before the end of the night. We didn't bring them here, but it's not, it's not, other than the circumstances that bring the situation before us, we didn't bring Zoning Board of Appeals here to discuss what led to them being here tonight. I'm going to stop for now. There are other people who want to speak. But I just want to thank you for what you do. And I think small businesses in this community, actually, all businesses who have a rapport with municipal government in this community certainly appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Monroe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I do appreciate the work that the EDC does, and I think the council's always had a good working relationship with the EDC, which is why I had some concerns about what I'm seeing with the, with the whole ARPA situation. So my main, this is not an issue about which I, I find myself passionate, right? Obviously, I want to give this money out in, in the most fair and equitable manner. My primary concern is cronyism, which is what I sort of cited a, a year ago, or more than a year ago, when we first started these discussions. So I'm not even sure that the EDC members understand sort of the background of this, of this issue. Certainly, they understand the background of ARPA. But in terms of the council's involvement, it was mentioned in your minutes that this was brought to the council in October of '21, or at least that that's when the council was sort of handed off this, this item, which is kind of true. But as Mr. Fishbein had noted earlier, Mr. Testa had put this on the agenda, I think, a number of times to talk about it. We've had people come into the microphone, and we were, we were told by the mayor to, to wait, wait until we get the consultant. So the mayor presented us with a plan, which was a backward-looking plan. And by backward, I don't mean in a diminutive term. I mean, to look back at sort of economic losses of the past, as sort of the, the focus of, of ARPA. So we, the consultant finally gets hired in, in about October of '21. We asked the consultant the question, how many towns are doing a backward-looking plan? He says he's not aware of a single one, but you could, you could structure this plan any way you like. So the question's, well, what are other towns doing? And, and they say something more forward-looking, like based on projects and so on. So the council sort of latches on to that idea. At some point, the mayor got turned back around from the forward-looking to the backward-looking again, and then the, sort of- looking again, and then the, sort of the lobbying effort that had been going on intensified. The, the issue I have is, if you go back and you remember the, the last election, there was this whole Dickinson hates dogs controversy, right? Where we're getting these flyers that indicated that Dickinson hated dogs. And I know the man, he doesn't hate dogs, right? He, he's, he's a super nice guy, but this was a way to try to illustrate a, a point, draw attention to something inappropriately. Because our values are, are wrong, we're, you know, morally misaligned and those kinds of things. We don't understand how business operates. So this whole, the reason I bring up the Dickinson hates dogs thing is because the effort we've seen against the council is the, sort of the same type of drawing attention away from the facts of what ARPA is and what we could do with it to, you don't just, you don't agree with me and therefore you have some sort of a moral issue. So this is where this flyer gets us. Is I don't think, if I stand back and read the flyer as someone that had no idea of any of these circumstances, there really isn't anything wrong with the flyer, right? But in the context of, you guys are, you know, a bunch of immoral, you know, valueless individuals, the flyer comes off in a completely different sort of fashion. So I think that's why, when I read the flyer the first time, I was like, I can't believe that this is the, the flyer that I came up with. Upon subsequent readings, I don't think the flyer was intended the way it was received by this group, but it sort of illustrates the issues that we've been having in trying to get a, a fair and honest practice of how we're going to distribute these funds going forward. I am deeply disturbed in that, I keep reading in the paper things about how the, you know, the council has no values and so on. I think if we support, you know, so if we said we wanted to spend all the money on business, you know, then one side's going to complain. If we're going to spend it all on not-for-profits, then the other side's going to complain. Or if we spend it all on community projects, someone's going to complain. I appreciate that when you ask for these jobs, you're never going to make 100% of the people happy. I just don't know why we have to raise the rhetoric to this sort of Dickinson hates dogs level of rhetoric. I think that we're all, you know, I think that we're all reasonable adults up here, including the mayor, and we should be able to come sort of, to some sort of an understanding on this. I'm just not sure how we ended up where we're at now. I'm also a little disturbed in what I saw as sort of coordination between you, Mr. Ryan, and the local member of the United Way and sort of trying to spur the discussion in a certain direction. I think it's great to get business owners here to talk about their issues. I'm happy to talk to anyone in town, business owner or otherwise, to talk about their issues. I feel like this is a coordinated tactic, sort of to, to try to influence the political process. I, I'm not naive. I understand this is how politics works. I just, this whole thing kind of doesn't sit right with me, I guess is the, is, is where I'm coming from. So that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Councilor Laffin?
Thank you. Chairman Servoni eloquently stated a lot of things that I wanted to cover, so my comments are, are reduced. I appreciate you guys too. I thank you for all the work that you do. I didn't read anything inaccurate. I didn't read it either as rhetoric to incite. I read it at most as to motivate or inform your base that decisions are made by people that show up. We discussed several weeks ago, a couple of months ago, adjusting the, the hours that restaurants could serve alcohol on Sunday. And it was brought up that, well, the place wasn't packed with businesses, so nobody wants it. We shouldn't do this. And we proceeded and, and we did do, do it anyway. This is simply to make sure that people know that they should partake in the process and that decisions are made by people to show Now, it, sure, the people that might be upset, might find it convenient that I, I do agree with the EDC's stance. And I appreciate your efforts. I, I don't see a problem with coordinating with the nonprofits either. You have a vested interest in both making sure that there's a review. I think the council should take a step back, as, as was mentioned earlier, and acknowledge that it doesn't look that great when, when half the money was put towards government projects with the pool thing. More was tried to, was discussed to be put there in the, the other budget that ended up being vetoed. And then tonight, we talk about spending more money of it on the skate park. So we at lea, I'm not saying that there was a nefarious manipulation on the council side. I'm saying that we need to take a step back and understand what the perception from the public and the business owners may be. And I think it's very fair that, that they would be concerned. Thank you.
Councilor Testa.
I had a conversation recently with a local firefighter about contract negotiations. Something we stress that is relevant tonight is the principle of negotiating in good faith. That requires mutual respect for one another's positions. During our many discussions, I've always felt that you and I have adhered to that. Granted, at times I bristled a bit at the tone with which you or Joe have explained to me the intent of ARPA, but that's not a big deal. Overall, it's been good and we've had many discussions here and in public and outside of here. But I'm going to be honest right now and say I was just very bothered by this letter. I felt it was a call to action based on a very sly misrepresentation. I have never indicated that I do not support relief for businesses and nonprofits, but I've been presented as someone who needs to be straightened out. That's how I feel. An example of the end effect of your letter is the op-ed that appeared in Sunday's Record Journal. I know you didn't write it. I'm going to quote a few lines. This won't be long. Either these counselors, me, either these counselors have no idea of how many organizations were affected or the depth of the damage that government lockdowns and pandemic restrictions caused because they have no actual experience as entrepreneurs or nonprofit governance, or they just don't care. They seem hell-bent to protect as much of the funding for pet community projects such that they don't really want to reach out into the community. In other words, my mind is made up. Don't confuse me with the facts. Here's another beauty. These stories of suffering and survival need to be heard by those public officials, me, who would rather not know because they see it as conflicting with their political ambitions. That was a good one. Thanks to those Wallingford Town counselors, them, with the values to understand that ARPA was passed to help small businesses to recover, for nonprofits to again have the resources to help those whose lives were devastated in the past two years. And it goes on. Now, I know those are not your words. We all know whose words they are, but they're predictable byproducts of your words. So many small business owners who do not follow our every move here can be expected to feel the same way. That's not acting in good faith. I still respect all of you. I expect to work productively with you going forward because frankly, our mission is too important for things to go any other way. But I wanted to share my displeasure. I was disappointed. I honestly, when I read it, I thought it was a cheap shot. And I think we've said, I've said enough. We should just move on, but you know, I wanted to tell you, I thought that I was hurt by it, you know, and I've had people call me about it and ask me about it. And, you know, it wasn't necessary. So, but I'm okay now. Let's move on. Thank you.
Councilor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too was quite upset by the flyer. You know, I feel like I, I have had a good relationship with the EDC and Mr. Ryan in the past, and this seemed very out of character. Mr. Ryan, you said earlier that you wrote it. I would not have guessed that you wrote this. It, it just doesn't sound like something that, that you would write. It doesn't sound like, it just hasn't been my experience with you. And so I, I was disappointed by it also. I did think it sounded accusatory and I think it was misleading. And it's unfortunate that that, the perception in the public is that we are doing something wrong when what we're trying to do is just figure out how to use this money. I understand it's, it's the EDC's role to protect businesses, but it's our role to look out for 45,000 people in this town. And the business community is part of that, but there is a larger community that is also asking for this money and showing us they need this money. If you take the $13 million and divide it by the businesses, and this number of businesses I got from an EDC meeting, some, an EDC member or commissioner mentioned that there were 20,000 businesses in town. That's not accurate. Okay. And I won't do the math on that, but that was said at an EDC meeting.
It was a misstatement.
The, the issue in, again, I'm not blaming EDC members. I, I know some of you personally and I've, I've had nothing but great experiences with, with you, but I think even some of the EDC members don't know or aren't aware of what has been going on with this ARPA process. And so I just, I want to maybe clear some of that up or maybe try to help understand why this was upsetting to some of us. I kind of feel that through the whole ARPA process, there were, there was a strategy from the administration from day one as to how this money should be spent. And it was decided before the council could even have any say. Back on, and again, this isn't easy because this is nothing that I wanted to come out in public, but now that this flyer's come out and we're being made to look like the bad ones, I feel that I have no choice but to let this come out. Back in February, February 16th, 2022, I had emailed our consultant and I had asked him, I was just looking for the breakdown of the time that he has spent with anybody for ARPA. And he wrote back to me, this is in February, it's basically been me with three meetings with the mayor, Janice, Tim, and one or two other staff to discuss the application process. I also did a bit of research on my own to see what other localities were doing for applicants that were more backward looking. So far, this has been a very mayoral-driven process with staff responding to his direction. I wrote back and said, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And then he emailed me again and said, and by backward looking, I mean to replenish for economic hardship that has already occurred. The mayor was adamant that this was his top priority. That is versus an applicant that would be using the money for investment in the future. Candidly, there was little discussion of this. I tried to bring it up, but it was not considered to be a priority. That was before many of the council conversations. Then I see in the EDC minutes, this is June 6th, under ARPA update, on, Staff Ryan stated that he met with the mayor and Janice Small, Town Corporation Council, to discuss the small business and nonprofit applications. And then later on in that same paragraph, the commission agrees that the application should go out to the community to determine the need for small businesses and nonprofits prior to committing funds for community projects. As the commission's hope that the council chambers will reflect the support of businesses and nonprofits. There are emails to, from the EDC to select nonprofits, not all. I know of a food pantry in town that serves 40 families a week. They know nothing about this. My concern with the flyer was who it was distributed to, what was that list? Because I'm sure it didn't go to every single business despite, you know, maybe your best efforts. It doesn't go to every business. There's businesses that aren't aware of this. So I, I, I hope you can see my concern that I think this whole process has been skewed by people that are on, not skewed by, but, but the people that are in the know about ARPA are people that are in the inside loop. It's, it's been agenda driven. It was decided before we were even allowed to discuss it, where the money would go. And there's been, I would call this smear campaign of the council through things like this flyer and through the, the communication that the, the purpose of ARPA is for businesses. And it's not. It's, that's, that's blatantly not true. And yet, every ARPA meeting, we have, you know, EDC members or, or people coming to the microphone and saying, this is the intent, this is the purpose, and the council is not using this for its purpose. And it's not. That's not the purpose of it. You can use it for that. You can also use it for parks. And yet, the Parks and Rec Commission didn't write a flyer like this and send it out and say, why don't you go complain because your town counselors aren't using the money the way it's intended? They didn't say that. They could have. They're being in the same boat. The PUC, you know, Public Utilities Commission didn't write a thing and say, oh, the town council's misusing your money because they didn't spend it all on sewers. But they could have because that's an allowable use. Again, I, I, I do feel bad about this. I'm sorry if I, because I, again, I, I have a lot of respect for all of you and I, I'm upset by it because I think it, it is out of character and, but I, I don't know at this point. I mean, I'm not, this, this whole process has been so tainted. I'm not really sure where we, where we go from here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Allenson?
I bet you're really looking forward to retirement right now. So, I, yes, I'm pretty jealous, but I've got a lot of time left. So Counselors Servoni and Laffin said pretty much the same things that I would say to you. And I wanted to also express my thanks to you guys for doing everything that you do. It's not easy. Taking a beating from at least six individuals tonight cannot have been easy either. And, you know, there's more because they're all groaning in the back. But we all have to deal with people who don't like the things that we say. We all have to deal with people who don't like the way that we put our face. We all have to deal with people who, you know, don't agree with the way that we might prioritize ARPA funding. And I happen to agree with you. Some people happen to not agree with you. I apologize in, not on anyone else's behalf, on my own behalf, because I, I think this has become kind of a larger issue than it really should be. But I did want to thank you for your work also. Attorney Small and Mayor Dickinson, because I know that you guys put this together as a starting point for us. It's gotten a little bit out of hand as to where we've jumped off to from there. And we're doing our best and there, everyone's been along for the ride with us. And I appreciate also everyone who's come into the room, whether they agree with me or not, because it's time out of your day. And for many of you that I see in the room right now, it's been a lot of time. And always, this is always last. So it's unfortunately the latest part of the agenda and I'm not going to belabor it anymore, but thank you very much to all of you. And thank you to my co-counselors as well, whether we agree with each other or not. It is a lot of work and we're all just here to do the best that we can. So thank you so much.
Sir Chairman. Counselor Zandry?
Mr. Chairman, with, with your permission, since I already went, would you, I could defer to Counselor.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Counselor Zandry. Good evening, gentlemen. It's, it's, it's good to see all of you here. I, I, you know, I know how hard all of you work as members of the EDC and you've done incredible work on behalf of our community, recruiting businesses, spurring economic development and helping retain businesses here in our community. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for, for all of you and for the service you give to our town. I think we are all frustrated with how the ARPA process has played out over the past few months and, and how we're trying to figure out on, on how to spend these funds. But I, I do have to say, I, I think that this letter has caused additional frustration. I think some of the wording was unwise and could have been said better, but I, I agree with Counselor Testa that I think it's just time for all of us to move on and move forward and, and, and figure out how we spend these ARPA funds to business, to, to benefit our small businesses, our, our nonprofits, and to do community projects here in town. But again, I, I commend you for all the work that you do. I do think this letter was a mistake, but I, I, I think you're, you're, you're doing the right things for Wallingford and I look forward to working with you and trying to finalize once and for all how to spend these ARPA funds. So thank you.
Counselor Zandry. Counselor Zandry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring up a couple of additional points. There was, there was a discussion element around money that was being allocated out of ARPA. So I, I just want to start with that piece of the conversation. The mayor was the very first person to, to utilize ARPA funding. He put it right in the budget. So at budget time, the council tried to use a little bit more. And I'll be fair, if I recall, it was, it was double what the mayor put in. I, I don't remember all the numbers. I believe the mayor's number was 500,000 or so of, of funding, and we were going to up it to about 800,000. Now, that budget got defeated, so the original amount goes back. When we brought the item forward to allocate funding for community pool out of the ARPA funds, the number that we utilized was too large, based on the 13.1 we had, and based on allocations we already made. We reduced it. We did that on purpose, to make sure we didn't hit the monies that we already allocated and to put in towards the nonprofits and for the businesses. And I want to call that out. I understand the, the sentiment or the anxiety of, "They're pulling more money. They're pulling more money. We're not going to get the allocation they outlined." It's always a concern, and I acknowledge it. But having said that, every additional allocation of funding that we did or attempted to do came out of the unallocated bucket of cash. With 3.275 in each bucket, that leaves 6.5 million available. The mayor used about 500,000 in his budget. We pulled in 5 million for community pool. There's still money there in that unallocated budget, because we knew there was some other allocations to potentially be used for other things. We talk about the application process for the nonprofits and the, and the application process for the businesses. There is no application process for the rest of the people in town that might want a park, that might want a road, that might want something else. I always believed that I have tried, and, and I'm not always successful, to sit up here in this seat, in this job, in this responsibility, to do the things I thought was right. And I've been wrong sometimes doing them. At the end of the day, I would rather lose my seat up here, being wrong about something and admitting to it, or by being pushed out of office because I did unpopular things, but things that needed to get done, and a majority of the people didn't like it. That's the way the game goes at the end of the day. I have no political ambitions, other than to finish serving out my term and letting the voters decide next time if I decide to run at all. I will make the best decisions up here that I can, based on whatever information I've got at the time. And I'll make mistakes, and I'll own them. I really feel like this is a rut in the process that we've had to deal, we had to deal with this. We had to address this. Because in my opinion, again, it's my opinion, this had, it was agenda-driven and a political undertone to it. Whether it was intentional or not, that was the end result. And if we don't address it, it comes back from somebody else the next time. And everybody wants elected officials that are not manipulated, that are not influenced in the wrong ways. But then when we stand up to do that, we get damned too. So I just want to make it clear that we are up here to do the best job we can with the tools that we've got and the information that's available. And we are sensitive to everybody and everything. We've got business owners up here. We understand business impacts. We've got people up here that have independent consulting gigs, run, run full-board businesses. That's all they do. Up until last year, I helped manage my family's business until it was sold. There were two elements to that business. One was critically impacted by COVID. I understand completely. And, and every salon owner that came in here, every nail, nail technician that came in and spoke, they enlightened me to elements I hadn't even thought of, hadn't even considered. Because I didn't even stop to think, that is an entire business structure that can't be done remotely. There are probably others I didn't think of. So I was real appreciative to get that feedback, because it made me stop and pause. And I want that, but I don't want it to be when it's set up tactically and negatively, in the way that the wording of this is, "I'm going to stand on, we believe this tactic is misdirected and not aligned with the intention of the American Rescue Plan Act." I completely disagree that that is correct in any way, shape, or form. There is nothing we're doing up here that runs against what the act allows. So when the statement was made, "We did nothing wrong," I don't agree with that statement, because that is wrong. We're not doing anything that we can't, shouldn't, or aren't permitted to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see, I, I keep on getting lower in my chair, because I get more and more disappointed that we're even having this discussion. But I, you know, I don't know how much the commission members know. You know, I know if I was on the commission and I knew that the mayor was already proposing to spend $585,000 out of the ARPA funds, and it still hasn't been approved, but the mayor's attempting it, I would be saying, "Well, why are we just saying the council is doing this?" Because the mayor's doing it too. The mayor's doing exactly what you're accusing us of doing, reducing the monies that are available for small business. But we're the target. So I don't know how much you guys were actually told about what's going on. So I, you know, that, that's of concern. You know, another concern, you know, I think Counselor Testa brought this up, is the op-ed on Sunday. Because, you know, I think it was learned in the last year or so that the author of this op-ed also writes for the chairman of the EDC. The timing of the op-ed, in conjunction with the flyer, looks like it's a coordination. And, you know, I, one of the parts that wasn't read, you know, "Thanks to those Wallingford Town Counselors with the values to understand," you know, that's imputed to you guys, because of your chosen connection with the drafter of this. And that just devolves the whole process. So, you know, I hope you understand where we're coming from. We're just trying to look, you know, I, I'm at least trying to work together. This is becoming more of a problem than it should be. So, and I did, I think you're right about the not approved. As far as I can tell, it looks like they are removed afterwards. So, but that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see any hands on the council, any members of the public. Mr. O'Connell?
Mr. Wolf's already up here.
I'm here. I've been.
Name an address for the record, please.
Jim Wolf, member of the Economic Development Commission. I want to let you all know that I was the one that volunteered to go door-to-door to the small businesses and hand out the flyers. And because I did, I have a little more information than you do. I don't, there's 2,100 small businesses in town, and I don't believe that they're all going to submit an application. In fact, the 35 that you mentioned, I don't believe it's going to be used. And I think what the EDC is looking at is take care of the small businesses, and then if you want to build a pool with what's left over, or a skating rink or whatever, that's great. But let's take care of the small businesses first. Get them out of the way. I don't think you're going to spend what you, you're saying you're going to spend for them. If you take 2,100 businesses and you put 100,000 on each one, it doesn't even come up to what you said. Right? Am I math right?
I don't think the math's right.
Yeah? It's wrong? Okay, I don't have a calculator.
It's okay. We appreciate your other talents.
All right.
I think it's 10,000, right?
All right. 10,000, right. But in talking to these businesses, I really don't think you're going to get that many people filling out the applications. But the ones that need it, you really need to take care of. And you really need to do that first. Get it out of the way. And then have fun. Pool, park, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connell?
Riley O'Connell, Edgerton Road. I think the most, and this has been an important conversation to have, but I think the most telling aspect of this conversation is that the only three counselors up there that fully, or didn't see a problem with that flyer, were the only three counselors that weren't being attacked by that flyer. They were the same three individuals who did not vote to use that money for community projects. And there's a totally valid, healthy debate to have there. And I go back to, I think, it was probably last year, I had a conversation with Counselors Zandry and probably many others, where I wanted to spend less money or give less money from the ARPA funds to businesses, and Counselors Zandry argued for more than I wanted. But it was a healthy debate, because there's good arguments to be made on either end of that. And I don't think that, that flyer was made with those, with those same intentions. And I also just want to say that the argument that we can't, you know, constructively criticize a town or an entity associated with the town because it's primarily made up of volunteers, and then even mentioning boards and commissions who are all made of volunteers, we did just that when we decided on, for a variety of allegations, to not appoint people to volunteer boards and commissions, literally a few months ago. This was this town council. So I think that is a hollow argument as well to be made. My real concern, because we all make mistakes, or maybe not even make mistakes, but come to the, see them differently with time. And my concern is that I've heard two contradictory things tonight, and that's the first thing I heard was from the EDC saying, "This was a mistake, and we regret it." And then I'm also hearing, "I don't see the problem. We did nothing wrong." And if it's the former, that's fine. We move from there. But if it's the latter, that is a serious issue, for all the reasons that were described today, and for several others. Specifically, the term in there that bothered me was what we've discussed time and time again. It's why I keep coming to the mic, usually every other meeting, to make the same point, but apparently it still needs to be made, was that that flyer said that the intention, well, to, to be fair, it said, "The EDC believes the intention of the ARPA funds is not being used properly if it's not being given to businesses." And that's an argument, you can make an argument that you, that it should go to businesses, but to say that the intention is not there is just fundamentally not true. You can believe anything. You can believe the world is flat. It doesn't mean that's factually correct. And so I think that's where a lot of this problem has, is there is a totally healthy argument to be made for all of this money to go to businesses. That's fine. But we cannot have that good-faith debate while we're still having this ARPA debate a year now into it, is because we can't have that debate in good faith if we're not operating off of basic facts. This money, for the millionth time, was allocated to communities based on their populations, not their economic output, to improve the community. Some of that can go to businesses. It doesn't have to. Many towns have not done that. So to say that it's the intention, the congressional hearings on the ARPA funds does not say that. The Department of the Treasury does not agree with that. It is just not true. I'm fine advocating for that, for people to use it for businesses, for the town council to use it for businesses, but we have to deal with the real facts of the case. One of the last things I want to say is, and why this feels like strong, or an attempt to strong-arm the council, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone here, either on the town council or even in the audience, really thinks that the need that's going to come in, or at least the applications is going to come in for less than 13 million, just welcome, raise your hands, because I would be shocked if it's less than 100 million. And it's certainly, certainly going to be more than 13 million. So I think that's why I don't have a problem with the town council deciding beforehand how much that money, we want to go in that direction. The last thing I want to say is, we're talking about 13 million. It was brought up already that 100, I think, it was 150 million was said. I think it was actually over 160 million that came in from PPP money. And if I could just ask one question to the EDC, because this has been discussed a little bit before, but do we know any reasons in particular that you're hearing from businesses in terms of why, if they're seeking ARPA funds now, why they wouldn't have sought PPP money? If that's okay, if I can ask that question? If there are any businesses, yeah, sorry.
If you could answer him in the microphone, please. Thank you.
Yeah, essentially, if you're hearing businesses are saying that they're asking for ARPA funds, but did not apply for PPP money, is there a common reason for that that you're hearing?
Speaking from my own interactions with the business that I spoke to, some of them did apply for PPP funding, and they're reimbursed, but the PPP funding doesn't cover all of their losses. So that's, you know, and I, I just want to comment while I have the mic here, that you made a couple of comments. I, I don't know if you, what part of the conversation you came into, but we never said that the sending of this, from our perspective, was a mistake. Okay? And you said, you accused us of saying it was a mistake. And we never, never made a comment to, to the council on how the money should be spent. It's totally up to the council how that, how all of the ARPA money is to be spent, who's to get it, and how much they're going to get it. That's, you know, we have a tremendous amount of respect. And after listening to the town council, just from my perspective, from myself, I hopefully speak for some of the others, listen, I, I'm not here at all these meetings every night, and I have a deep appreciation for every single one of you and the work that you do, and the difficult situations that people beyond your control can put you in. So, you know, I appreciated everybody's comments tonight, and I took them to heart, every one of you. I don't necessarily agree with some of the comments, but I take them to heart, and I have to really have empathy for your, your perspective and your position. And, and again, I have an appreciation for everything you do. But I think you need to make sure you listen, maybe re-listen to the script a little bit again and get your facts straight, because we didn't, you're accusing us of saying things we didn't say.
If I could just point out real quick, at the very beginning of this conversation, I believe, I believe you mentioned that when you were talking about Mr. Mira not being able to be here, that after reflecting on how this flyer was perceived, either by the town council, the community, that there was, maybe the term "mistake" was not used, but maybe one of the, none of the members of the council or public can agree, or, you know, echo that point. But I hear what you're saying.
But that's fine. But don't use a word that wasn't used. Don't infer that, that does.
It wasn't a quote, sure.
Then what happens is it does the same thing that we're being accused of doing when you start changing words and.
Well, then the word that you did use was, you called the town, the town council misguided. So to say that and to say that you're not suggesting that they shouldn't use the money in different, in a certain way, I mean, it's a very particular word to use, I think, in response to this scenario. And I know them over time. So the last thing I just wanted to leave with some constructive suggestion, because obviously the EDC does do a lot of great, important work in this community. And I believe it's an EDC meeting I attended about 12, maybe 18 months ago. One of the things that was discussed, and I don't know if it used to have this name many years before I got involved in politics at all, but there was a discussion on maybe changing the name to the Economic and Community Development Commission. And I think that goes to a lot of what we talked about tonight, in terms of what really is the overarching goal of the EDC, and how do we best, you know, achieve that mission without necessarily resulting in, in this, this type of disagreement. So just a suggestion to maybe give the EDC a more wide, big-picture view of what their goal should be. Thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I know that you were talking about PPP money to businesses, and some say it didn't replenish all their money, and maybe it didn't. But there have been a few other programs available for businesses. My question is to the EDC, have they gone to the businesses and presented all these other programs that are available and helped them through the process? I can give you some of the names of some of the programs if you want. Employee retention credits? Any of these? I saw Mr. Ryan talk to the person next to him, so I guess they're just going to ignore my questions, because they know what my position is on the ARPA money.
So, just so you know, ARPA's not on the agenda tonight. So, just so you know, ARPA's not on the agenda tonight.
I understand that, but they were talking.
It's merely the, the reaction to this flyer.
The fly, well, it's the flyer. And the flyer is saying that you need to come here and advocate for a position that is, says the money belongs to the businesses. So what I'm saying is, there's other programs that have been available. Has EDC advocated for those positions, for the, for the businesses around town?
May I comment?
You can comment.
I don't think we ever said that we wanted businesses to come and argue that the money belongs to them.
I didn't say that.
What we've said was that we want the businesses to come forward so that the council can hear firsthand the amount of loss that this pandemic has caused to them.
I understand. I said advocate. I didn't say argue or anything else, because it's advocating. You're taking a position one way or the other. What I'm asking is, did you, on any of the other numerous programs that are available, and more are coming in the pike right now, did you advocate for any of those with the businesses? Help them do the applications? Why so much on this one and not any of the other programs? Well, deaf ears. All right, so I guess I could just talk and somebody. I do agree with Mr. Carmody. You know, you've got to work as a team, and, because this is going to go forward. But what's happened to what councilors have said tonight, and what's been said in the past, that the mayor is directing this without the council's input. You really need, I would hope, with the, and with the EDC and the mayor, it seems, it doesn't seem that the council's been having much input here, even on the application. It would be nice to see the, all of you work together on this. I mean, it's, I mean, you are now two years and three months approximately passed when this passed, and you're sitting here tonight with really no money spent and no applications yet. I mean, I, I mean, it's crazy. It just, you know, it's, well, I guess I won't ask some of the PPP, some of the economic programs that are out there, but it is a question because you, you guys have talked about it tonight on the programs. If there's more money coming in the pike for businesses, and it has passed the House of Representatives already, and it's approximately $55 billion, what would happen if you have the applications out there and businesses qualify for that? Why, I mean, who's looking out for the interests of the citizens and the needs of the community? We don't have an, we, meaning, the public doesn't have a seat at that table if the council's not in that room with the mayor. I would just hope that, I'm disappointed that, I assume that if EDC had helped applications for any of these other grant programs or loans, they would have acknowledged that they did. But I guess their silence means they haven't, in which I don't understand why then the town's money, meaning the town can decide how they want to spend this money, should all go, is what the EDC wants, all to the businesses, when they haven't advocated for the billions of dollars that have been available to the businesses in town? And everyone knows, people know they've gotten hurt. Nobody's saying they haven't. Nobody's saying not to give them anything. But everything is not right. Thank you.
Mrs. Gross.
Debbie Gross, Long Hill Road. Can you hear me?
If you stay close to that thing, we can probably hear you.
I have a question. Who establishes the Economic Development Commission?
There's an ordinance that established it, and I believe that the mayor appoints the members.
And it's overseen by whom? The council or the mayor?
It's, well, I guess the mayor with the coordination of the Economic Development Coordinator.
And they're mainly volunteers, except for one person? Is that correct?
They are volunteers, except for the coordinator.
Okay, so I have a question regarding documents that are created from the Economic Development Commission, and how they are distributed to the public, and what is the review, review process on those?
You have a question about it? Is that a question?
Yeah, what does that happen? How does, I mean, what is, is there a review process? I mean, so, I mean, we've got lots of committees and commissions in the town, and I'm guessing that anything that leaves those commissions, whether it's paid or volunteered committees or commissions, are reviewed by somebody. Is that a fair statement, or no? Is there a legal review? Is there?
I, I'm not seeing a bunch of people jumping up to answer that, but I suspect that the mayor doesn't review everything that the EDC publishes.
Well, I'm just saying in general, right? I mean, so that being said, our committees and commissions represent the town, right? So my concern is that documents leave the committees and commission with information that obviously has created quite a conversation tonight, and quite a concern. So that's why I'm asking the question, like, what's the authority? What, I mean, can anybody just decide on a commissioner committee to put out a document? And it obviously not necessarily represent, or should maybe be looked at and toned down? Or, I don't know, I'm just saying. I mean, I'm just asking that question.
I'll respond to that. The commission is appointed and has the authority to meet its goals and to issue such communications as it seems appropriate.
So does that?
No different than any of the other boards and commissions. There is no review process that they cannot say anything without having someone else approve it. The commission, its structure, it's, they can vote on things, they authorize their chair or, or paid staff to do things. That's the way they function.
So any committee or commission in the town of Wallingford could publish something anywhere, even in the newspaper, even if it's not representative of what the town wants or feels appropriate, is what you're kind of saying?
Each board or commission has the authority?
Okay, so you answered my question. Thank you very much. So the commissions do have the authority to publish what they will. So I guess that being said, I know some of you feel that this letter that went out to the businesses was inappropriate, and I happen to agree with that, and potentially a mistake, right? So I guess I would have to ask, what's to prevent a mistake like this from happening again, so that we don't have to have this conversation? Obviously, there were some things in it that didn't, weren't appropriate.
We could repeal the First Amendment.
But this is the town, right? And you're speaking on behalf of the town. So you're not speaking on behalf of yourself, as freedom of speech. You're speaking on behalf of the town of Wallingford, so I think.
Well, I think they're speaking on behalf of the commission.
Which is the town of Wallingford, because they're appointed by the town.
I'm, I'm, I don't.
We can agree to, we can agree to disagree.
I'm not going to agree that, that every commission appointed by the town speaks for the, the whole government.
They published a document. I think we're going to disagree on that one. I guess I have a concern about the potential material that can go out there. That being said, I'm, I'm going to drop that because obviously we're going nowhere with that, but I believe I have a good point on making sure that documents, I'm sure, even when it came to the 350, that somebody reviewed the stuff that went out to make sure that things were right in it, that there was a second pair of eyes on it. So that's all I'm saying. We don't want to create this conversation again, and I'm trying to think about ways to prevent it, and that's my point. Nothing, nothing less than that. So I guess I would like to also thank Councilor Tada, Councilor Fishbein, especially, and the other, Cesta, Councilor Cesta Carmody, and Zandry, and Marone, for speaking out on this, and especially, Councilor Fishbein and Tada, for actually outlining facts and the truth. They were very informative, and I thank you very much, because that is what we need to see, is facts and truth. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for public comment time. We've actually exceeded it. If there's nothing, Councilor Fishbein.
Yeah, just briefly, I had a thought come to mind. Why is the EDC having to go to downtown businesses when there's, there's potential coordination between EDC and WCI? You know, I get emails from WCI, I've gotten emails from EDC, you know, mysteriously, I was not emailed this document. So why wasn't, if, why wasn't there that sort of coordination?
There was a scheduled meeting with EDC, WCI, and the Chamber of Commerce the day before, yesterday, that was canceled because the agenda item was taken off the list. If you're referring to Mr. Wolf distributing flyers, he did not distribute them downtown.
Oh, I thought he said that. Okay.
Yeah, no, he did not. So yes, we coordinate all the time with WCI, but that, that meeting to coordinate was canceled because the agenda item was changed.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. We're going to move on to items 12 and 13 on the agenda.
I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-206D with respect to the purchase, sale, and releasing of property, and Section 1-225F and Section 1-206B to discuss the pending litigation in the matter of Gilbert and CHRO versus Town of Wallingford.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council an executive session. Please kindly clear the chambers. Please kindly clear the chambers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. Can I get a motion on number fourteen?
Mr. Chairman, a move. We authorize settlement regarding the matter of Gilbert and C H R O. C H R O, First Town of Wallingford, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Came way too fast.
You've had a half hour.
Yeah, I know.
It's actually been like forty-five minutes, but it's fine.
And it doesn't matter.
Time has no meaning.
No.
Throw this empty Pellegrino bottle at you. He said no.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion passes. Item fifteen, the internet. Counselor Fishbein.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
We got an update.
Yeah, we got an update. I printed it out.
Why?
Because he had internet.
Because you know internet.
You know, I'm just trying to figure out what is going on here. We have been over for, over a year now have been represented that there's going to be internet in these chambers. And this is like pulling teeth. The update that we got today.
Pulling teeth doesn't take this long.
I, I agree. The update we got today contains a quote. Unfortunately, the quote is dated like today. So I don't know why or who's been working on this. This is an access point. Okay. But if this quote is necessary, why wasn't this quote gotten a year ago? We have a letter from Rob Baltramidis dated the thirteenth about pricing and that he's made a decision about that. So I think there was a representation in here that this will be done. Can be done by the end of the month. I, I certainly hope that to be true. As to utilization, because I think Mr. Baltramidis makes a lot of assumptions in this correspondence. I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but you know, I guess I'll come over here on a daily basis and see if it actually happens. Otherwise, we'll put it on the next agenda and see where we are at that point. So that's where I am on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Item sixteen. Counselor Fishbein, casebook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't see the chief here. I know it's a late night. Probably see the chief on Saturday, but where are we? I guess the mayor is here. I'm sure you're in tune as to what we're doing with. Having some sort of conduit between the police and the public. I know over the weekend, there was some very troubling activity in the town. I believe the only avenue by which the, the, um, the police could communicate with the public was through a press release. I know I've had officers speak to me about what other towns do. I know it was represented to us previously that the police department was going to have a webpage, which I believe. My review of our records indicate the last time we talked about this was September fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. I know that I have built four webpages over a weekend. So I guess, Mr. Mayor, where are we with this item?
They're working with web solutions for a revamped page, pages on our website. They have a, they have a presence on the town website as it is. That will be completely revised and they're in the process of that.
And what is our timeline on having this?
I don't have an exact timeline. They're making progress.
I don't know what that, I mean, as I said, I've built a webpage, full webpage, photographs, JPEGs, all that stuff.
Well, it, it will carry abilities to put press releases out on it. It will, will, you're not going to see photographs of any police officers, but. Certainly there'll be appropriate presence for the police department and its ability to advise the public.
Okay. I don't, I don't know why there wouldn't be photographs of police officers. For instance, you know, I think it's a, it's a community enhancing experience. When, you know, I've seen in other towns when an officer pulls their car over, they see some young men, women playing basketball and they do that. Somebody takes a picture. They post it on Facebook. I think that's a community.
For their own security. You know, we, we have threats against our own police chief. So for their own security. It's certainly not a good idea to put photographs of every member of the police department on, on a website.
No, I, I wasn't, you said there would be no photographs of police officers. I just, I would hope that this is somewhat of a community enhancing experience so that people are not afraid of police officers. They have a very stark interaction. I think it would be healthy and helpful to our community that when, you know, Scout just had the event about international. Heritage. And I know our police department was part of that. Fire department was part of that. So I, I think it would be helpful on a community relations aspect. Take a couple of pictures, post it somewhere. Now if.
It would have to clear security issues because if you're a police officer, I'm not sure you want your picture. Just like you're supposedly, you're not able to get their addresses. You're not able to identify them in many ways. And there's a reason for that. So. I don't know that we would want all of our police officers known so that if they have to do any kind of undercover work or anything else, oh yeah, I saw his. These are her photograph that would be up there for what weeks, months, years. So, you know.
Okay.
That can be a further discussion, but I, I would be surprised if the department wanted to advertise in that way. Certainly the way they comport themselves on the job, meeting with people, being personable, that, that certainly is very appropriate. But a permanent photograph. I just put myself in the place. If I were a police officer, I would not want my photograph there.
So I, I would expect that there won't be any police officers participating in the parade. We'll be borrowing photographs of them. We're going to have a picture of the chief of police.
That's an entirely different issue of the way they comport themselves on the job than to put a permanent photograph on a website. So anyone can go from other towns across the world and see who they are and where they work.
I totally hear you. Don't agree. Don't understand.
I'd leave it to the police department, quite honestly.
I, I, I got it, but I've got the police department members complaining. So we have police department members that have Instagram accounts that are posting on their own activities in this town. Pictures of themselves, things like that without an official stamp. Just looking to get some control over here. And to hear that, you know, somebody would be concerned, I mean, if an officer appears at a, an event or they're doing something with kids that we can't post. You know, that somebody can't take a picture of it and post it. I, I just, I don't get it, but that's not the first time. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, if I may. I, I just kind of want to outline, you know, at, at the end of the day. The ability for the police department to have a, a page on the, on the Wallingford Town website to put up press releases. Is, is something as opposed to nothing, but I, I, I think what we're missing here is again, what, what a lot of the other towns do. If a road closed right now because somebody hit a fire hydrant and they had to knock off two sections of the road, there's no way to notify anybody of that timely. If they could put a post up on Facebook and say, right now, this section of South Elm is closed because of a, of a fire hydrant break, people could avoid the area. And I think that's really the crux of, of where the original conversation started back in the fall. There, there are other towns that do this. The, the, the mayor and first selectmen offices do this, but definitely the element of being able to say. There's a parking ban and I know the parking bans get uploaded to the website, but there's a lot more traffic going to Facebook than there is to the town website. And to be able to get these notices, especially on events that occur more impromptu. If, if we lost power in town hall and we had to post that town hall is experiencing unexpected closure. And it's somewhere that people could get to it, then people wouldn't come to town hall the remainder of that day. And we can't get this done in web solutions over months. I don't see how we could pick up the phone and say, hey, put this up real quick. Because town hall is closed because there's no power.
There are many ways to communicate. We can do it over Everbridge. Certainly easily solvable in many ways. I'll use an example. West Haven, in January or February, a message went out. On social media, representing itself to be from the city of West Haven, that they were not going to plow the roads. It had just snowed. Caused a furor. It was on the news. It was a false. Anyone could put anything on the social media and pretend that they are not what they really are. People, if they want veracity, they want to be sure who they're talking to, then you go to a site that you know is a governmental site. We have, I believe there were three other sites representing themselves to be the police department on social media. I know at one point there were nine or ten sites and they may still be out there representing that they're the Wallingford Recreation Department. And they had the director and they had it all listed and, and looked like it was all official. Had nothing to do with us. So I think we need to be careful about where we're representing government. People have some ability. To rely upon that message as indeed from government. And social media is not a place that you can be sure of anything. Who is the architect of it? They can represent almost anything they want to and you don't know who it is.
I would argue that in a vacuum of information, anybody can masquerade as anybody, without a doubt. We don't have a presence, therefore anybody that wants to could take the place of our presence. But if we had a presence, people would know right away. It would go up, it gets circulated and people right away would jump on it and say, that's not the official Town of Wallingford page. This is. And they, and if it gets turned into Facebook, it does get taken down. But again. We can overcomplicate and make the argument for not doing just about every, anything. I, I, I think there's merits in trying to do this. I know that when we brought the item up, it was to, it was to get things up there more timely. You use the example of Everbridge. That is, that is, that should only be used for the most critical of information because once you start doing it for things that are. Less consequential to the average person, they start to ignore the fact that they've got a message on the phone from the town. Oh, I get that every week. I'm just going to start ignoring it. I, I, I think this is a, again, we, we've got all these other towns that do it. They experience the, the one-time situation like you outlined, which is, is a problem to address. But every other day, three hundred and sixty-four other days of the year, a hundred and sixty-nine other municipalities have some sort of a presence. Whether it's town, town-sided or police or fire, whatever it might be. And they're very successful at messaging and keeping the community informed. I still think it's something that we should look at moving forward. But I appreciate that they're going to get some independent presence on the town website. I just don't think that it's enough. Thank you.
Mr. O'Connell. I await the profound. Mr. O'Connell, I await the profound.
Riley, Riley O'Connell, Edgerton Road. So late, I almost forgot my name there.
Like I said.
Yes, I'll try to keep it brief, but this, this is important. This is safety at pretty much the lowest cost possible. So I don't, I don't, I think the website's a good start, right? You can have a social media page that links to website as well. You're talking maybe 20 to $60 a year to keep up a website, so I don't think it's a huge expense. But as has been said for years now, and has been requested by numerous members of our police department, it is essential for the safety of this community that we have social media pages. With all due respect to the mayor, I'm sure he knows a lot about how the town functions in ways that I don't, but I'm pretty sure I know a little bit more about the Internet and social media. And it is in this vacuum that these things can happen. There's nothing, by not having that social media presence is, does nothing to prevent all these fake accounts from popping up. Quite the opposite, if you have a verified account, which functions in the same way that a .gov website would function in terms of authenticity, that automatically can prevent those other accounts. You can't create a Wallingford Police Department Facebook page if there's a verified one that exists. So I think it's just in terms of the timeliness of reaching the community, of telling them when even as simple as roads closing and even just giving our police department, showing the positive things that they do all over the community on a daily basis. I think it's just common sense. Obviously, you have to pay the police department for the training, but beyond that, I, it's just unfortunate that we still have to keep arguing this time and time again. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands anywhere in the room, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I declare the meeting adjourned.